And lots of bills and I'm sucking it up. So here I am.
Beautiful.
Well, I said I'll wear it because we're still the NFC kings of the north. So yeah, I mean.
All right, Madam Mayor, it is six oh three and we are live.
We've got a rowdy crowd tonight. All right. You, oh, ah, I should feel honored. All right, are we live?
We are live, Madam Mayor.
All right, good eve- good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty five. Can we have, oh, that's twenty twenty five, the first one. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rash.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Ronaldo Diaz.
Here. Thank you very much.
I don't exist.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Mimi May.
I am here. Thank you.
She's deeply apologetic for that, Mimi.
I'm fine. Oh, yeah, it wasn't her.
And I was just gonna say that. Um, any, oh, um, moment of silence is led by Mr. May, who's here, and I will do the pledge of allegiance.
All right. So I just want us to take a moment of silence to, um, kind of center ourselves and get us ready for the meeting ahead, remembering that we are elected to lead the citizens and to represent them. And may we use our hearts and our heads and serve to the best of our ability. Amen.
And Godspeed to Jimmy Carter.
Amen. I closely execute the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, are there any additions, deletions, or reordering?
There are not, but I do want to apprise the public for those that did not get an email that this morning two items were removed from the agenda and will be on January twenty first, a resolution regarding FERDA, which is the Florida Recreation Assistance Agreement, and a discussion on unsolicited proposals. So those were removed this morning. You don't need to vote because it was amended before the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McVoy, your light is on?
Yes, thank you. Um, as the city clerk mentioned, I deleted one item. In its place, unrelated, I would like to ask my colleagues for permission to add an item. In discussions, the city attorney agreed that it would be wise to proactively address the city's safety concerns regarding trucks on the beach. And the attorney indicated that they would need direction from the commission to prepare a letter to that effect. So I request that we add an item regarding beach safety to give that direction to our city attorney. And I guess that would be new business, unfinished business. I'll defer to others.
Is that a motion to do that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Um, so it's four one? I didn't hear you. You said aye. You said?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I didn't think so.
Three ayes.
I, uh.
So that's enough ayes. Yeah, aye.
Well, uh, it's something obviously that we have to discuss. So you just want a discussion about it? Or what are you looking for, though? So that I can, let me, is it just a discussion?
A discussion to give direction to the city attorney.
So that's two different things.
Well, if we're, you know, I, the reason I'm, I'm resistant to do that is because one of the things that we hear often is, you know, lack of knowledge beforehand or lack of any sort of backup. And this is a very, very important issue for the city. So I'm a little surprised, actually, to hear you come up with that, that with no, no forewarning, no backup. I know that the staff is working on this problem, and I don't know that we have enough, excuse me, information to give city attorney direction. That's, it's a big conversation. So, Mr. Brown, would you like to chime in?
Oh, yeah, this, this came up in a one-on-one yesterday, and we actually spoke with Glenn Torcivia, our city attorneys. Um, and our recommendation was to, uh, you know, obviously bring it to this meeting and bring it up and see if that's something you guys wanted to discuss or not, to give, uh, give the attorney's guidance to put together a letter.
Well, my only.
Is it time sensitive? Sorry.
Go ahead, no.
Is it time sensitive?
I would say yes.
I'm a little surprised that we haven't gotten something from staff up until now, honestly.
Again, I, I kept everyone apprised. I sent you, uh, copies of the email.
No, I understand that, yeah.
I have not received anything back as of right before this meeting from the town. So I don't have any other updates to provide other than what I sent you.
What about Lantana?
Um, I did speak with their manager. Um, they have not been contacted either as of this morning. So unfortunately, I do not have an update other than, um, what I pushed out, which was a request for all of the crews that were listed, which we're gonna need if they're gonna actually do that.
All the, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you there.
So, so that was the request for, um, you know, structural analysis for the pier.
For them to do it?
Correct. Um, as well as a safety plan, all, all of the things that are kind of just hanging out there. If this was actually gonna come in, fortunately, we would need all of this information. So we currently don't have any of that. I formally made the request in writing. I have not received anything back as of now. So I don't have any other update other than what I pushed out to everyone and the fact that I checked with Lantana, they have not been contacted, um, either the manager or the mayor as of now. So.
Okay, I mean, I, again, I don't think we're gonna have enough to make an action, but we can certainly discuss it. So I'll change my vote to an aye just for purely for discussion, because I really don't think, we just need to update and talk about it.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, that's the only reason. I, we don't have enough information unless some magic leaf drops out of the sky. We all have very strong opinions about this, as we could well imagine. All right, so that would be an addition. That would be, where would that go? That would be, um, I think, new business or?
New business, see, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And if it's, and especially if it's not been on the agenda, I have some concerns if we're taking a vote on something as important as this without having the public have prior notice that we're talking about it. So, um, with that addition, um, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, tonight we have, our first presentation is a welcome and an introduction by our newly elected state representative, Deborah Tendrich, and she's here tonight with her legislative aide.
Push the button, turn it on. There we go.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Tendrich, and I am your state representative. I just got elected in November, but I do represent several areas in Central County. Uh, my job is going to become, is to be a bridge to Tallahassee. My goals are to really work with the community to make sure that I'm advocating for your best interests and make sure that you have a part in the legislative process. Uh, I found that there is a big disconnect between many of you not even realizing you have a state representative, what we even do. And so what I want to do is make sure that you're a part of the process. If I go and advocate without hearing what your needs are, I'm not doing the right, a, a good enough job for each and every one of you. So basically, District eighty-nine covers Lake Worth, Lake Clark Shores, Palm Springs, Green Acres, Atlantis, some of West Palm. And the parts of Lake Worth that I am responsible for are from Dixie Highway to just western military, but not quite to, uh, Jog Road. And some of the issues that I will be focusing on, they will be affordable housing, access to healthcare, making sure that you can really have a clean, safe environment here, our clean waters, clean air, making sure that our environment's protected, and just making sure that we can raise families here in safe, clean, and affordable Palm Beach County and District eighty-nine. I also want to make sure that I work very closely with our commission here, uh, making sure that we've pushed forward some of your legislative priorities to make sure we try to fight for funds that will fill the needs, that would take the financial burden off of each and every one of you. Uh, and also make sure that we provide advocacy workshops to show you how to follow bills and things that are important to you while I'm up in Tallahassee fighting for you. You can actually follow what we're doing on topics that are important to you. So we can organize town halls, we can organize advocacy workshops. I can come and just meet with each and every one of you to find out and welcome you into our office. My legislative aide, Joey, is here. He is also going to be working with me in Tallahassee, and I have a district aide that will stay here in the county. Her name is Audrey Pietra. And so together, the three of us, along with your commission and each and every one of you, I look forward to working with you. We are having an open house. The open house will take place February twenty-fifth. It is from four to eight. We do have some flyers with our address and our contact information if you would like to do that. The reason we're doing that is because we don't want any distance between the community and our office. We want to let you know that you can come in at any time. You can reach out to us and we're accessible, because that's what I signed up to do, and I want to do a great job and become your true bridge to Tallahassee. So you do have an advocate, you do have a friend, you do have someone in your backyard that will work hand in hand with each and every one of you. So again, my name is Deborah Tendrich. I'm your state rep. Thank you for giving a moment just to introduce myself.
Oh, of course. And where is your office where this open house is gonna be?
Sure. We're only about ten minutes from here, and it's on the, in Florida, uh, Florida Mango and Forest Hill Boulevard.
But that's not just helpful as it could be.
I'm sorry?
That's not as helpful as it could be. Do you have an address?
Yeah, we have a flyer. Yeah, eighteen fifty, Forest Hill Boulevard, Suite two hundred, and that's Lake Clark Shores.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't want my people wandering.
Deborah, where is the flyer?
Uh, Joey does have it. We have not posted online, but I do have a state rep Facebook page. So I will be posting that on the Facebook page. So you guys could actually go onto State Representative Deborah Tendrich and find all the information. We also are going to be actively showing the things that we're involved in and update on the legislative process once we're in Tallahassee. You can also go to Write Your Representative, and if you give us your email, we can keep you in the loop with emails with what we're doing in Tallahassee every day as it pertains to the local district here.
Great. And I know that you worked very hard to be elected, and congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming to the scenes. Thank you. Next up, in presentations, we have our annual proclamation declaring January twentieth, twenty twenty-five as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Whereas, and we have a lot of people here for that tonight, so good to see you all. On Monday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the nation will recognize Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And the annual, and whereas, the annual King Holiday Observance is a time that we celebrate, commemorate, and honor the life, legacy, and impact of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Global citizens will have unique opportunities to learn and unite in celebration of Dr. King's groundbreaking work and Mrs. Coretta Scott King's powerful continuation and formal institutionalization of that work through a variety of engaging events hosted by the King Center. And whereas, this year marks the fortieth official King Holiday Observance event schedule, culminating in the celebration of the Martin Luther King Junior Federal Holiday. This year marks what would have been Dr. King's ninety-sixth birthday. And whereas, the official twenty twenty-five theme is Mission Possible: Protecting Freedom, Justice, and Democracy in the Spirit of Nonviolence three sixty-five. This theme honors Dr. King's unwavering dedication to justice and equality through nonviolent action, serves as a powerful reminder that safeguarding freedom, justice, and democracy is achievable when we unite in love and nonviolence. And whereas, the City of Lake Worth Beach and the MLK Event Committee, the hardworking, consistent MLK Committee, will sponsor events in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior and encourage its residents to participate in the scheduled events from January eleventh to twenty-fifth. And whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's dream encompassed the hopes and dreams of all Americans. I, now therefore, I, Betty Rash, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim January twentieth, twenty twenty-five as Dr. Martin Luther King Day Junior, Junior Day. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Lake Worth Beach to be affixed the seventh day of January twenty twenty-five. And I just want to take a minute and thank everybody that works on this committee for years and years, and the volunteers, and the time that it takes. So I see a hand. Yes, we're, we're coming down. We're coming down for, we're not passing this up picture opportunity. Don't know. I just wanted to thank everybody that does it and encourage everyone to, there's wonderful events that take place on that day, and I encourage everyone to, to come and join us. It's, it's great food as well. All right, let's come down.
So where will this sort of go?
This is for the city social media. This is for the people standing up there that want to. Also this.
Right?
Okay, come up with me. Absolutely. So, okay, thank you for the proclamation. We appreciate the city's support in so many ways. Staff has been involved in planning, as have the, the mayor and several of the commissioners on an ongoing basis. But we did want to let you know.
Folks, folks.
But we just did want to let you know that the community is working on a couple other projects throughout the course of the year that involve infrastructure for the city. And they've had been discussed at various stages, and they're working their way through, through the approval process. But, uh, first of all, there's that Fannie James, um, uh, area down in, in South Bryant Park where the original post office, the true post office was. And there's been discussion over the year of putting up some kind of a structure, a ghost house, or.
I want that so bad.
As a structure to mark the location. Well, we're working on it hard, and soon we're gonna have a model and a presentation.
Thank you.
To make to the city about that possibility. And Rita, you want to talk about the Osborne Community Welcome?
Yes. Uh, one of the other projects that we're working on, we never get tired of working. We always working. Uh, uh, we're in the Osborne Community, and, uh, we're working on a welcome sign. And, uh, we, it's already in the hands of our city manager getting it over to, you know, prove us and what have you. But we, we plan on getting started on that. A beautiful, uh, Osborne Community Historica Community Welcome Sign on it for, uh, Railroad in Washington.
Perfect.
So we just continue to keep working for our city. And we just, again, want to say thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for all the participation that you have been given to us. And, uh, while I'm standing, because I'm gonna leave, I just want to say that we're moving forward. We're moving forward in our community. We're uniting ourselves together. And I'd just like to make sure that the mayor and commissioner, city manager, thank our utility director, Mr. Liberty, and, uh, our engineer, James. They come down and been working faithfully, faithfully with us with the sign. I mean, they're on the ball.
That's great.
So we have no complaints. They're doing a great job. So let them know that we appreciate them.
Great, absolutely. I, Ms. May?
Wait, before you go, can you share the events with the community for the MLK Day, please?
Yes.
Hmm, great.
I might forget about everything, but we have someone here that can correct me. But on Friday night, we have a performance at the, uh.
St. Anthony's.
St. Anthony's Church.
We didn't get one.
There. And, uh, on Saturday, we have a cleanup in the Osborne, West Palm community. And on Monday, at eight thirty, we have our interfaith breakfast. We want everybody and all, bring your friends, bring your guests, that we have our interfaith breakfast at Barton Elementary School at eight o'clock. And we usually have a great, great time. And I want everybody to know, all our events are free. We don't charge anybody for anything. I was just told today I can come to the breakfast in Boynton on Monday, and I got to pay fifty-five dollars.
Ooh.
We don't charge you for anything. We give you a full course breakfast. We usually feed from two to three hundred people on, on that, at that breakfast. And we want you to come and enjoy with us. And on Monday afternoon at four o'clock, we'll be here at City Hall with the sing-along, uh, here on the steps of City Hall. At five o'clock, we line up and we march to the cultural plaza. There, we have, we can light march to the cultural plaza, and we have a short program. We don't make it too long because it's cold and windy. And, uh, our guest speaker will be Bobby Powers, our county commissioner for District Seven. And, uh, after the program there, we will all leave there and go to Sacred Heart for dinner. These are free. This is free. City of Lake Worth Beach is the only city, and I participated in all. Boynton, West Palm, everybody charge. We don't charge you anything. We do ask for a donation, whatever you want to give, and that donation goes into scholarship for seniors at Lake Worth High School.
Thank you so much. It's a great day. Okay, now, public participation of non-agenda items and the consent agenda, which we don't even have one today.
Okay, Anthony Segred. Might as well, you're up. What does she want?
Anthony Segred, six oh one, South Palm Way. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I just had a, a real quick comment. Uh, a couple meetings back, we, we had the meeting on the artificial turf, and the suggested ordinances were, were voted down. But it's now been well over six or eight months, I don't even know, that many residents who've been cited for this erroneously still have liens on their properties. And the commissioner, at one point in one of the meetings, said, you know, it would be taken care of when the new ordinance is passed. Well, the new ordinance got voted down. There really is no plan on, on when a new ordinance will come up. So I'm asking the commission that if in their next meeting, they could direct staff to immediately look into removing these liens that were placed on people's homes erroneously. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Triola Clahane.
A recent move to Lake Worth Beach.
Pam Triola Clahane, North Ocean Breeze. Back.
We heard. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to talk about infrastructure for a second. Um, as you guys probably remember, I'm kind of an infrastructure nerd, and back in the day, we had a refer, we had a vote, and we had a forty million dollar bond that was passed to fix the roadways. First, we tried a sixty million dollar bond. Jamie remembers this well. Then a forty million dollar bond. And last I had heard, the bond was still being worked when I had left, and they were still finishing up projects, but we were ahead of schedule, and we were under budget. And that was the last I heard. I know that there's supposed to be a follow-up to that. I don't know if you guys have had that meeting yet or not, to follow up as to all the jobs and exactly where all the dollars went and how we did finish out that bond of forty million dollars. I'd love if, you know, once you get through your pending stuff, if we can hear about that and the necessity for another, because the roads aren't getting any better. You know, the goal was to, to find out if there was any extra money left. We were gonna go back and look at the roads that were next on the list, and I don't know where that went or where it's at. But you don't want to be in a position that we were in way back when, when we were staging Barbies on the big giant holes as swimming pools on, in the middle of their streets. It was bad, and it just kept getting worse. So I know that maintenance was supposed to be upped and doubled and tripled, and I know that some of that, that, um, penny sales tax money was supposed to go towards beefing up the maintenance fund. When I looked at the last budget, it doesn't look much more than it was when I was here. So, um, you're gonna be in trouble again. And I'm just, would like to urge you, now that I'm back traveling the roads on a regular basis, that, uh, it's gonna be a problem, and you gotta get ahead of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Peggy Fisher, followed by Anthony Zeitlin.
Peggy Fisher, North A Street. I have heard numerous times from this commission about if you see something in the city that needs to be fixed, report it. We've got all these contacts and everything else. Well, I am appalled at the city that since Friday of last week, there have been no flags flying on the flagpoles in front of this building, none. You can't put a flag at half-staff if you don't have a flag flying. And that says to me that no one in this building or who visits this building, who is part of staff, pays any attention to the front of this building that is our building. This is our city. This is representing our city. And that is an atrocious view to present to the public, that no one had said one word about no flags were flying in front of this building. I say a lot of things, and Betty makes a lot, the mayor makes a lot of fun of me for making comments, um, and always speaking. Well, I'm gonna speak a lot tonight, and this is atrocious. This should never happen. There should be someone that every day walks around this building and make sure there is not trash, other undesirable elements of things in the, in the public ways. And obviously, it's not being done, and it should be done at every city-owned building. And I would like a commitment that this city and staff is going to take care of the buildings. If you're asking the public to watch all the potholes, or watch all the code violations, or piles of trash, and call it in and report it, well, I'm calling this in to you all. And you know I'm calling it in because I know you heard about it today and didn't know anything about it. Um, so I'm calling it in to you all, because this is a derelict on you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know how that happened, and I'm sure it's gonna be fixed.
They were at half-mast for Jimmy Carter, and they disappeared. They are checking the cameras because staff did not take them down. We did not remove them. We obviously don't have security twenty-four seven at nighttime, so we are trying to figure out.
So our flags were stolen.
There are no current flags flying out in front of City Hall. Staff did not take them down.
We, excuse me, we need to get an American flag up tomorrow.
I understand.
Thank you.
We, we have replacements.
Okay.
I just replaced the two.
I know, you just didn't. That's why they took them. They were new. All right. Duly noted, Ms. Pidger. Okay. Uh, yeah, they were just put out. That's why they were stolen. Anthony Zeitlin, followed by Kenneth Posner.
Anthony Zeitlin, one one seven Eighteenth Avenue. Um, I'm not sure how you guys spent your vacation, but I spent mine walking around the city and talking to as many residents and citizens as I could. I started downtown, going to the beach. I talked to the staff at the beach, uh, many of the lifeguards, which I am friends with, personal friends with growing up here. Um, I went south to where I now live. I went north to where.
Please speak into the mic.
And, you know, it's crazy, because I ask questions, what is most important to them? And you know what they say? It's not, it's not all the potholes. It's not that we have some of the highest taxes in the county. Uh, it's not that both the Lake Worth Pool and Lake Worth High School Pool are completely empty, except for the rainwater that's collecting in it. Uh, it's the code enforcement. This, uh, we, and, and this has been going on since I was a kid. Code enforcement here is so ad hoc, there's no rhyme or reason to it that makes any sense. And it needs to be completely, just completely redone. It needs some sort of way of expediting things. Somebody was telling me that they were trying to put in a landscape. They were trying to put in a, like a, a zero scape, and they couldn't do it. The city made them rip it back up and leave it as dirt. The city would rather have dirt than a zero scape. That's what's going on here. And, you know, I always felt like leadership is where it starts. It starts at the top, especially in Lake Worth. This is a small community. Everybody knows each other. Um, and, you know, it, it's just, it doesn't seem like anything is ever happening here. I hear a lot of motions. I hear a lot of motions. I hear a lot of points of order. I hear a lot of voting, yays, nays. That is meaningless. What matters is the citizens and their needs. And I'm one of them. I assume all of you are as well. I know they are. That's why they're here. And, and it just seems like nothing is going anywhere. Um, I reached out to certain people and I have not heard back with the information that I requested, um, which is disappointing, but you know, I guess that's par for the course. So I would like to know, uh, you know, at some point, is anything going to change? Because so far it does not seem to. Now, I've talked to some people. Well, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, use the rest of my time.
Can you write down the address of the, where you, you said the code problem was with the dirt and the zero scape? Can you write down the address of where that happened? Thank you. Just, uh, just leave it with me. Okay. Bring back my pen. Kenneth Posner, followed by Ramsey McLeod. Kenneth Posner has two things going on here. You get one, you get one, Kenneth. You don't get just one. You don't get two.
Then I guess I'll, I'll speak to the, um, parking situation. Uh, thanks for speaking with me. I spoke with, uh, Commissioner May recently. We had a really constructive conversation. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the time. This is my first time, so be gentle. Oh, yeah. Yep. Kenneth Posner, eleven ten Lucerne Avenue. It's the Artist Lofts. Uh, and that's really what I'm here to talk about. I'm a teacher. My wife is a teacher. Uh, she's also a professional artist, a sculptor. Uh, she's exhibited at the, uh, Palm Beach Cultural Council. She has work up in a gallery in New Orleans right now. Uh, I'm just a history teacher. I'm not as accomplished nor as talented.
Really?
I appreciate it. But, um, the reason I'm here is, uh, speaking on behalf of our small community of artists, there is, um, a, a relatively recent enforcement of posted parking signs on the north side of Lucerne Avenue between the tracks and F. That's right across from Hatch Eleven. And I understand that those, the, the signs that limit parking to four hours have been up for quite some time before the Artist Lofts were built. And as the community has grown and Representative Tendrich was talking about this, about raising families and, uh, making, uh, a, a higher quality of life for our residents. Uh, those are our, really our front doors. And, uh, we've started being ticketed, which we feel is unfair. Uh, it's, it's certainly inconvenient. Uh, there is limited parking behind those Artist Lofts. Uh, so having those spaces in front, uh, having a two and a half-year-old, uh, it really helps being able to have a car there for more than four hours at a time. So, uh, I'm here to raise this issue with the commission to ask for, I'm not exactly sure if this uh, necessitates a new agenda item on like the, uh, in the next meeting or something to that effect, but some sort of perhaps an exemption for residents uh, in the Artist Lofts to that, that parking restriction. Um, I don't know if I'm, am I making sense?
Do you each get two spaces with your?
We have one space, uh, in the back. And actually that, that speaks to like these expanding families. So one of our neighbors, uh, they also have a, a child who's two. He's like right behind ours. Uh, there's, uh, it, it's a lot of couples. Everyone has at least two cars. Um, some of them said they'd be here tonight, but they didn't make it. So I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, I guess. But, uh, our families are growing and, and it seems like, uh, these, these parking stipulations are antiquated uh, and are really militating against our, our quality of life. So, uh, something that, um, uh, I'd like to see resolved, that we would all like to see resolved. And, and I think there's some easy ways to do that. Uh, also, I mean, it, it, I, I guess the intention when we spoke to the parking office was that this was supposed to be about sort of preserving spaces for commercial access. But it's really just Hatch Eleven across from us. They have an enormous parking lot that I have never seen filled. Unless it's like fireworks during New Year's. Um, but, uh, this is, it, it, it seems like uh, something that would really enhance our quality of life. And, and I have faith that this commission would find a way to, uh, sort of restore that quality of life for us.
And we're sort of looking at the parking in general. We have like a whole parking city that we're talking about. So thank you for that and we'll keep that, um.
Yeah, Commissioner May had mentioned that there is some like discussion of that. It sounds like that's, that's, we're a bit far out from that. Uh, so I was, we were hoping for something a little bit, yeah, sooner, but thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ramsey McLeod.
Ramsey McLeod, twenty-four South C Street. Backup documentation. At the last commission meeting, several important informational items were left out of the backup materials. Artificial turf ordinance. The presentation by the subs- sustain, sustainability department regarding artificial turf contained a slide that provided a visual look of how the space set aside for this product would look on a variety of lot sizes. This information was very valuable in helping residents understand better what was being processed or proposed. Unfortunately, this slide was never in the backup material, but when I requested it from the city clerk, she was able to email me a copy of the slide, but advised that she could not add it to the backup documents. City of Palm Beach Beach Restoration Project, Renourishment Project. During the beginning of this discussion, Commissioner McVeigh interrupted the meeting to provide a copy of pictures of our beachfront from nineteen thirty-five to members of the diocese. However, this document was not made available to the public. When I emailed the city clerk and Commissioner McBoy requesting a copy, she was the only one who responded and further advised, if provided, she could not add that document to the backup material for that item. I am still awaiting a response from Commissioner McBoy. Unfortunately, this pattern of placing important in, information in a slide presentation, but not making it available to residents must stop. There needs to be a process available where slide presentations are also available in the backup materials for an item on the agenda. In addition, Commissioner McBoy has continually complained about the backup documents being provided in a timely manner for review. But then he comes late to a commission meeting and interjects providing a historical document of consequence that he made no effort to be included in the backup documents or provided to the residents or the city clerk. I think a way to stop this is to have a policy that if the backup documents are missing an important informational piece, then that agenda item must be rescheduled for the next commission meeting. Street Painting Festival Contract Award. At the last commission meeting, you approved a contract with Sunfest to put on our street painting festival for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. I provided comments, but I see they're not being addressed at this meeting. I am still wanting to know what was the basis for this payment? We have yet to get the final report regarding the expenditures and revenue from this event last year or any years since the city took over. Residents have a right to know what the justification is for this payment figure and just what was the cost last year for city staff to do, to do the work needed. When Marianne Weber and Nadine Burns put the, on this event, they were able to provide this accounting. So why can't city staff do the same? Everything we have about this event is, is digitally available. And yet, here we are. At the end of the year, you get a contract put in front of your faces. You passed it with a company that is now three million dollars in debt. And yet we have no justification for that expenditure at that rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Todd Townsend.
Hi, Todd Townsend, five oh two South J Street. Uh, before I start, did anybody actually learn anything from the king? If you have a dream, follow it, work it. Anyway, so on to our business here. So, uh, not too long ago, Commissioner Malega asked, why sixteen years worth of work in sixty days? And, uh, well, we can actually answer, start to answer some of that. For one, it becomes very hard for the public to follow and participate. Uh, so I think that people should watch the pre-agenda meetings and, and see what's really going on under, underneath, underneath the cloak here. You know, hence we've got this beach theft, uh, thing happening and it's all in action now. Yes, keep in mind that, uh, there's going to be no more reading public comment by the clerk. Um, so people can expect either come here or just not to have your comments, uh, heard out loud. We, we have a lot of stuff up in the air right now. And then, so going through all this stuff so fast is just like creating chaos. So backing up, um, we've got, uh, the mayoral project, which is like wants to speak for like maybe a hundred million dollars to fix the annex. And then to build the new Betty Rush Memorial City Hall of Lake Worth Beach. And we're going to use rolling sweeping code to code everyone to pay for it. Um, we got the, we had the, it brought up recently and that's going to have to be a bond project. And that was brought up because we've got a billionaire who wants to build a private pool in the middle of our parking lot. Speaking of billionaires, why would a billionaire need public money and public space to do what he wants? You know, uh, we don't, do we really need to ensure their success? I mean, this is a big company, great company. There's a great opportunity yet one block away from where they want to do this. They should back up and look at that and, and check that out. Meanwhile, we've got the CRA in support of the museum sneaking pages in and out of, uh, while they were doing the, uh, presentation. Uh, and they want to build their own skyscraper right in our downtown, right in the middle of our pocket park area that we've been talking about for quite a while. And so it just all really spells chaos here. And I think that we just need to back up and slow down and, uh, do some thinking because personally I'm not with everything that's going on here. But I do love, know and love everybody around here, so.
Thank you. Okay, they have, I don't think there's any more cards. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Um, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, it passes unanimously. Public hearings, ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. Please read by title.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eighteen and ordinance of the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending chapter twenty-three land development regulations. Article three zoning districts, division one generally, section twenty-three point three dash six use tables. And division three mixed-use districts, section twenty-three point three dash seventeen, MUDH, mixed-use Dixie Highway, and providing for separability, conflicts, codification, and effective date.
Okay, thank you. I just asked Mr. Waters to just briefly go over what this is.
Uh, good evening, everyone. It's William Waters, Community Sustainability Director. This is the second reading. Uh, we've made some corrections to, uh, uh, address discrepancies between nursing facilities and assisted living facilities. They're essentially the same thing. They were not reflected. Um, so within the permitted use table and some of the definitions. And so we have, um, dealt with that. Uh, there are no changes. They are still allowed in the same area as they were before.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any public comment? And Madam Clerk, I checked earlier. I saw no public comment entered on the website. Is that accurate?
Correct. I have no public comment this evening at all.
All right, great. Thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, public hearing number two, B, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, second reading. Please read by title.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one and ordinance of the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending chapter fifteen offenses miscellaneous, article one in general, by adding sections fifteen dash twenty-two facility rules and fifteen dash twenty-three trespass warnings on public property and other property generally open to the public. And by amending section twenty, fifteen dash twenty-nine lodging in public areas or in parked vehicles in public places to prohibit sleeping in public areas in the city and providing for separability, conflicts, codification, and effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. McBoy. Can I have my pen back, sir?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Who made the second?
Malega. Thank you.
It's chaos. Thank you very much. I only brought one with me tonight. Appreciate it. Uh, thank you. We've, where are we? Thank you. Discussion on this. Yes, we have Mr. McBoy. What would you like to say?
Um, I've thought about this one quite a bit and, uh, would like to read some comments. While I understand and support the unfortunate necessity of protecting the city from lawsuits pursuant to the state law that went into effect January first, I'm very concerned that both the state law and the proposed city ordinance will have the unintended effect of forcing homeless individuals out of the parks and into the neighborhoods on the private property. I'm already hearing from residents that they are seeing homeless individuals sleeping in non-public spaces, including private business areas, church areas, and school parking lots. It concerns me greatly that back in April or May, when we as a city still had an opportunity to actually reduce homelessness, rather than pushing it from public to private property, we as a commission did nothing. While we still had several million dollars of ARPA money that might have actually reduced homelessness by providing access to housing or services, I asked my colleagues to direct staff to work with the county and/or with nonprofits to bring a plan back to the commission. I actually myself met with County Department of Community Services, along with several nonprofits who work in this area. My colleagues chose not to provide that direction to our staff. We were told that PBSO had a plan. But that plan was developed without commission or community knowledge. And we as a commission never insisted that our biggest paid provider show us anything in writing. We still have not seen anything written. No process, no funding details. Later, when the commission had the opportunity to commit two or even one million dollars, my colleagues voted zero. I am very concerned that our own inaction, combined with the unintended consequences of the state law and the ordinance now before us, will simply move our homeless issues into the neighborhoods, worsening, not lessening the problem. This ordinance includes several parts. Half of it, about half of it is exterior, about half of it is interior. Uh, so the rest of these comments, well, they apply to both, actually. Part of the intent of this ordinance is to increase safety for our employees, which I fully support. I also support the city taking action to reduce the risk of being sued under the recent state law. At the same time, I am concerned that some items of the ordinance as proposed might inadvertently infringe on our residents' First Amendment rights and therefore expose us to a different set of lawsuits. In particular, the word disruptive used in several locations is not defined in the ordinance. It seems to me this opens us up to, greatly to abuses. One person's peaceful but vocal protest is another person's disruption. I do not want our city to be the next face of a lawsuit for infringement on First Amendment rights. I request that we clearly define disruptive or as, you know, if that's not recommended by our attorneys for, you know, legal reasons, um, then at a minimum, I ask that we declare somewhere in this ordinance our intent to protect First Amendment rights. And I think our attorney might have some language that could help us with that. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, I, I agree with that kind of, um, concern of unintended consequences. Um, and you know, we try to, to govern a city with compassion and there's, it's not to say that the, the things that need to be addressed and attempted by this ordinance or even that state law, it's not to say that those things are not, shouldn't be taken seriously. I think they, they really do need to be. And it is, uh, an issue to be, to be handled for sure, but the problem is, and how I feel this ordinance is written is, um, we've had issues with something very similar in the past before. A lot of it is duplicative. Um, things like trespass, things like possession of illegal drugs. Well, those are criminal laws and I've said it before. You know, those issues happen, um, substantial risk to harm of persons' property. Like if somebody assaults someone, I would much rather go through criminal law than whatever any ordinance could do. I still feel, um, strongly, as a, as I mentioned in the first reading, the way to approach this would be, uh, the inside of buildings, I think is all okay and everything else is okay. It's the outside of buildings that I take issue. I think with that, we should, um, basically say there was a line previously that said we're abiding by the state law and, and, and so on and so forth. And I think we should kind of stick it to that. To highlight some of the, the things, you know, for example, subsection ten of unlicensed vending period. Uh, it's very rare that you have a two-word subsection in ordinance. It has to be exceedingly clear to have that. And I don't think it's clear at all because I think, you know, there are things that we need to address uh, that would be a concern in, in regards to that in terms of like food safety and things like that. If, if somebody is setting up a tent and setting up a de facto outside kitchen, that sort of thing, that's, that's certainly one, one issue for sure that needs to be handled. But, uh, you know, a definition of vending, we don't really define that. So that could also be someone who maybe sold, you know, like I bought a used guitar the other day and I met someone on public property to acquire it. I mean, I think it needs to be hashed out. It's not really properly. set, set out here. I mean, defined to me with unlicensed vending, I mentioned that in pre-agenda and the response says, well, it'll be obvious. It's it's vending and I don't think it's that legally clearly obvious. It could be the mother and child selling tamales out of their car, you know, to make a couple bucks for Christmas. It could be somebody setting up a grill with a tent and setting up a whole outdoor kitchen, like I said. I mean, obviously, that second one is something we need to address. I think if somebody needs a safe space to do something that's otherwise legal, um. You know, that we could run into some issues there. I'm concerned about selective enforcement. I'm concerned about it being used as a target in terms of who's calling in what. Um, but I I just have a lot of concerns and I think things like the unlicensed vending, maybe that needs to be handled by its own ordinance whole section so that we could better define it and and set the parameters, but I just think right now the way it's written is uh, it's just too much and I I can't support it.
Okay, thank you. We have, do we have any cards from the public, Mr. Brown?
None of this item, no.
Okay.
Ms. Malaga? Thank you. Um, couple things. Would you consider disruptive as disorderly or uncooperative?
There's this, can I, I just looked it up in the dictionary. I mean, there is a definition of disruptive.
Right, but I'm saying I also looked up synonyms, words that mean the same thing. If he doesn't like disruptive, there's disorderly, there's uncooperative. He just said he didn't like the word, so I'm throwing out other ideas that mean the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, and we did talk about this on the pre-agenda meeting, and I just looked up how many times I personally have called PBSO, not emergency number. Twenty-two times since September for unlicensed vending. And I will continue to call every single time I can't cross the street. Or every time there's a backup of traffic, or every time there's five or six cars on one corner, it's a safety issue. It's a health safety issue. And the person that I had mentioned during the pre-agenda meeting who did call PBSO, who unfortunately their car, every single window was smashed out the next morning, that person listened to our pre-agenda meeting and texted me the next morning. And said, thank you for standing up for us, but thank you for not using my name.
Mm-hmm.
And which I never would do because that's just, it's personal and private, but this is a real issue. There is legalities as a business owner who has had to pay license and sales tax and go through the proper channels. Either we're gonna have a ruly city, just like the gentleman said earlier, or we're gonna pick and choose what we enforce. You can't do that. So to me, unlicensed vending is unlicensed business. If you have an unlicensed business, you are breaking the law in the city. I don't care if you're selling tamales or if you're selling baseballs out of the back of a, of a trunk of a car. It's illegal. And we have to enforce it. So I am not opposed to working the language for all of us to feel comfortable. I do not feel that PBSO or our code enforcement is ever going to use anything for retaliation or for targeting anybody because we are one community. And we we sit up here and we make sure that we're equitable. We make sure that we take everyone into consideration when we're, when we're making rules and regulations and passing ordinances and we really do think things through. But Captain Carn is here, and I don't know how many, if he could look up and bring back to us in a couple of weeks, how many times they have written tickets and warnings and arrested the people who are selling food out of the back of their cars, and they don't care. They just show up and move one street over. They don't care about breaking the law in our city, and to me, that's infuriating. There's a time and a place to do stuff. Do it the right way, do it the moral way, and pay your dues to society. It's not fair to the business owner who owns a restaurant two blocks away, who's selling the exact same food, and he's paying and doing it the legal way. That's not fair. It's not equitable, and I am, I'm not going to back down on this part of it.
Thank you. Mr. McVoy, is your light on?
Um, I would strongly recommend that we hold line one fifty seven, ten, unlicensed vending. Um, I hear some of the concerns, certainly concerns about, and I'm not saying that we don't deal with it. I think we probably should deal with it. Uh, I certainly hear the concerns about it interfering with the flow of traffic. That is an issue. Um, there are other cases where it doesn't at all interfere with the flow of traffic. As far as people selling things and the business owners being upset because they're selling the same things. I happen to know for a fact that that's not always true. There are plenty of places that sell tamales or they sell a tool, or they sell things that aren't sold in, in brick and mortar businesses. And, um, I don't, I, I think you're making a concern that, and speaking for folks where that isn't there. Um, it, there is an issue of how people live. I just came back from two weeks in California. All over the place, even more the example that Commissioner Diaz had where there is in fact a tent set up. And there are people cooking things, whether it was Armenian food or Greek food or whatever. Um, there are different possible ways to do things. I would say let's try to figure out as a separate issue. I wouldn't roll it into this one. As a separate issue. What are our priorities for PBSO? How much do we want to distract them from going after drug dealers or violent crimes or guns in the community, things that are more serious and need attention? And maybe find, spend some time fine tuning a little bit. Can we accommodate some of the nature of our community in a way that doesn't interfere with traffic flow and some other things? Um, I would suggest that we do that. I would also request, um, that if we do have language available, um, that was talked about as far as the First Amendment aspect. Maybe you could share that with the commission and see whether there's interest in adding it.
Thank you. Ms. May?
So I've been thinking a lot about this issue because I was going back and forth and with my own heart and, um. I, I just, I cannot condone breaking the law, and I can't believe that we have a, we have leadership up here saying, let's look the other way on this law. The other laws, we can, oh, those are okay, but this one, it's not culturally appropriate, so we're going to ignore it. And I, I can't do that. Um, you know, I'm worried about especially, you know, when they're selling, they're selling product on, um, city property. Which is, all this is talking about, by the way. This entire ordinance has to do with city property. City streets, something different, really, honestly, this only is talking about on our property. So that's our liability. So if somebody gets sick buying food from a trunk on the hatch parking lot, which the lady's there every day, she has a perfect drive-through. Um, we are liable because she's on our property.
Aren't the streets our property too?
So our streets are property too. That expands it all over. So my point is, we cannot pick and choose the laws we like. That's not how this works. So unlicensed vending is pretty obvious. You're selling things without a license. Vendar, to sell. Or something like that, vender, but it's means to sell. It's not, it, it, they're not selling illegal substances, so it's not as bad as selling drugs. I understand that. However, it's kind, it's the same thing where you're selling without a license. And I really don't think it's fair for the commission to say, we are banning food trucks. But we condone food trunks. That's unacceptable. If we want to have selling out of automobiles, then we need to look at food trucks, which are licensed, which the health, what the health department looks at. You know, that's a completely different way of vending through automobile.
I think we should.
But just opening up a trunk and selling whatever out of it, it's not safe and it's not fair. And I, I mean, to, to the point where we are having people who report this, getting their windows it's that broken, it's the broken windows theory. We have to deal with the little things as well as the big things. I don't want to live in a city that just worries about the stabbings. I want to live in a city that worries about health and safety for all of the residents. And I, I cannot condone taking anything out of this. I will not vote for that.
Okay, um, we have, Mr. We're gonna get too shit. We don't need to talk about this all night. We know how Ray feels. Mr. Diaz, do you have something to add?
Um, it seems like it'll pass as is, but I hope we can maybe revisit and talk about hashing more of what we talked about because I'm not saying this is an issue that needs to be addressed. I'm saying it needs to be addressed adequately and and to the comment, we did take a stab at allowing food trucks. It was along G Street, and I, I agree, we should allow them more. I would love to, to allow more of it, and we've mentioned that previously. We should revisit that, but there's a way of doing it, and a two-word section in ordinance is usually not the way that you do it. I mean, I think there are things that we need to consider. There are definite concerns, and then there's also jurisdictional overlap. Uh, things like food handling and whatnot is not typically gonna be within our jurisdiction. That's Department of Health, that's state, that's other government, and so. Right, and so, and so that's why I, like I pointed out, it needs to be better hashed out as opposed to just two words on. Um, and, and for those reasons is exactly why, but I do have, again, yeah, very real concerns about disrupting traffic and safety. Obviously, they're one-way roads. Um, and, you know, the comment, I definitely don't appreciate a comment about looking the other way on, on laws. Uh, we try not to do that, but things do happen. I mean, you know, you, in this city, you need a permit to have a parade, and not that long ago, there was a parade that was organized without a permit. Uh, that definitely falls in that category, and should we go after every single one of those events? Or what about the events that hand out alcohol and things like that? I mean, there's so many things, and these are a lot more nuanced than as presented uh, uh, in this ordinance, and, and that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying these are things that do not need to be addressed and we should look the other way. I'm just saying there's a better way of doing it, and what I'm looking at is not, not adequate. And in regards to our response to the October first legislation, I mean, other cities are handling this. I think Orlando is doing a pretty good job. This is definitely something to look at. It's very unfortunate. Uh, but again, I, I do think, uh, this is kind of the case where uh, you know, we do the bare minimum to meet their requirements and let it, let it be on a state to see if we're doing adequate, um. Work. I'm, you know, there's so many unintended consequences. As Commissioner McVoy pointed out, I'm concerned that we're about to have a couple of weeks of forty-degree nights and you have people, I'm, honestly, the conversation should be had is why are people in our community living like this and why are they in this situation? That's really, uh, how I look at things. Um, it's really unfortunate that we didn't take the opportunity to invest in programs to help and and help people lift themselves out of those situations, but here we are, um, and it appears that we're going to be taking a punitive approach.
We have, Mr. McVoy, you've spoken twice. I think we've understood your, your position. Um, we have some public comments, um, from Peggy Fisher and also I, Anna. Okay. And this is a blank one that you gave me. Okay. Sorry. Sorry, it's all right. I'll write it in. I'll write it in.
Not given out of hanging.
This is my pen, darling.
There's one right here. Peggy Fisher, North A Street. I totally agree with Vice Mayor Malaga, Commissioner Diaz, and Commissioner May. I don't agree about selectively deciding we're gonna look the other way. I lived next to a home that had a rental RV. Five feet from my fence. And it took two years to get that nice, not removed, but at least there aren't people living in it. That's a cultural thing, from what I understand, from down in Homestead and around Miami. That doesn't mean it's legal. We have ordinances in this city for a reason. We have put times of opening and closing of our parks. Which we don't enforce, by the way. How many cars are parked overnight, night after night after night at Spillway Park? That belong to the townhomes just to the west of it. Those gates to these parks should be closed. That's the, if you have a park, we used to close the gates at the parks, then we stopped. If we're gonna have hours for our public parks and our city facilities, then we need to abide by them. And I'm tired of hearing it's a, you know, immigrants and this, they're all, unless we're an American in this room, immigrants. I'm an immigrant of a Irish and Finnish background. We all are immigrants. That doesn't make us any different. We live in this country, which is a country of laws. And if you don't want to abide by the laws of this country, then you need to go to a country where there aren't laws. And you can do whatever you want, or buy your own island and live on that. But if we have laws, and I know for once, I tonight told our captain about the lady selling out of the trunk of her car in the hatch parking lot at minutes before this meeting because right line was stopped at Second Avenue for whatever reason. And, uh, so it happens all the time. It happens all through my neighborhood.
Thank you. That's time.
I don't see it. T S.
Thank you very much. Anna? Name and address.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Anna Maria Windish Hunt, four oh four South C. And Ms. Malaga is correct in what she has made. I walk my neighborhood. I no longer drive, so when I go out in the mornings, I'm very aware of what's going on. I have called PBSO. By the time I speak to them, I'm at my bus stop, but they understand. And then I was told they have given out seventy-two citations on the vendors. Few weeks later, maybe about a month ago exactly, I walked down. And I've been observing these people. These are not the little old ladies that are trying to support their homes. Which I would support immediately. However, they have a, trying to figure out the correct word. They have a mafia. I have seen a woman collect the money from the people. I call PBSO as I walk by figuring, okay, they're gonna get me, but I'm gonna call. I describe her, what she's wearing, what she looks like, which tooth is missing, and she's a big woman. Seriously, so what we're missing is the fact they are organized. This is not random.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and happy new year. Todd Townsend?
Hi, Todd Townsend, five oh two South J Street. What about garage sales? What about yard sales? Some of the stuff you buy there might be broken or unusable, whatever. Just add that into what you've got to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, I have a motion, a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Up next is the one thing I will say about this, I'm very concerned, the one thing I am concerned about is signage. We've really got to get on the signage about what's going on with the hours and, and a few other things that we need to get signs about, um, smoking, all that. Oh, Ms. May, you have something to say?
Can we give direction to staff to come back at the next meeting and let us know what, when the signs are being printed, when are they going to be put up and give us an exact status on what's going on with it?
I don't see why not.
I think Director McKay is working on it.
Okay, so hopefully we can get a report on when that's going to happen.
She says yes. Oh, and here she comes.
Do you mind if she comes up?
We would love her to come up.
Hello, Director McKay, uh, Director of Leisure Services. Hi, Anna McKay, Director of Leisure Services. Sorry, wasn't expecting to come up. But now that this is passed, we are currently doing an inventory of our park signage. We're going to make some nice signages that say the names of the parks and all the things.
Slow down, slow down.
All of the things in the sign, all in one sign, so we don't have a lot of sign pollution and make some nice uniform signs. So our team is actively um, doing the inventory, and now that we have this information, we'll work with city attorney and make sure we have all the.
And like the smoking, all the different, yeah, okay, thank you so much. Once again, staff comes.
I do have one question. Can we please make sure that the, the sign is multilingual?
Okay.
Or there's pictures because, and, and I'll just speak for Royal Pointe Sienna. Even the pictures help more than the Spanish because sometimes a lot of our community doesn't, they can't read, or they can't read Spanish. So even pictures or something to help be as equitable to all of our residents as possible.
Okay, and you'll look into that for sure. Okay, I mean, I go to a just different country and they, never mind. Um, you figure out some signs, but that's fine.
So you would like that for next meeting?
And I just wanted to know that it was being done and getting an update. That's it. I didn't, I was not trying to call you on the carpet tonight.
But you did.
Can we just discuss that, Matt? Can we just discuss that, Hat?
I didn't even recognize you at that, Bill Lyons. Sorry, uh, I don't mind ever coming up. So I hope you provide you with an update.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, and the importance of the, the inventory, obviously over the years, so many signs have kind of been put up all over the place. And there's just sign pollution everywhere. So it's important to get the inventory, know exactly what's out there, what can be removed, what can be consolidated. So we don't have this all over the place. So it's, I know it's been.
It looks a little chaotic with all of the beach.
Um, I don't have a set timeline, but we're moving quickly. We know that it's important. No, it's just, don't take that long. No. We've got, we've collected some other examples of other signs and other municipalities, and we've got a list of what we'd like. And now we have the trespassing. So I think we'll be able to move quite quickly.
Might be helpful just to not to be too in it, but maybe run it by us if we see anything that we would like to add or take off with.
We were looking at like Wellington, Boca, pointing that there are a lot of different municipalities that kind of do it in different ways and how the language is. So obviously we're, we're looking at different things right now. But obviously the important part is having this inventory as of what we have right now. Um, so we can see how we can consolidate these and make it as efficient as possible.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
It's ongoing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we voted. Okay. Um, next up is new unfinished business, the Bennys on the Beach Amendment. Which, um, let's read, um, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the Fourth Amendment to the Retailees with RTT Bennys on the Beach, Inc., the current tenant Bennys.
Do I, and I have a second. Um, Mr. McVoy?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, who made the second?
Malaga.
Ms. Malaga.
I have a mask on. Is that why you can't hear me?
She's muffled.
I guess no mask and no mic are not a winning combo.
Now, now.
She's doing her best. She has the mic.
Now, now, Madam Clerk. Okay, Mr. McVoy.
That gives her superpowers.
Miss, it's, Mr. McVoy?
One of our jobs, as I understand it, is to be fiscally responsible to our residents. Uh, regarding this, uh, Fourth Amendment, I support waiving section 6.1, the landlord's right to terminate the lease on notice of a sublease. I'm fine with waiving that. Let's look at section 6.2. Quoting the current lease, section 6.2 requires the tenant subleasing to pay the landlord any amount received from subtenant for the subletting of the lease in excess of the rent then being paid by the tenant subleasing to the landlord. I have a question for the city attorney. Am I correct in understanding that section 6.2 requires that RTT Bennys on the Beach, Inc. pay us 100% of the rent that RTT Bennys proposed receive from Sushi by Boo Global LLC? 100%?
It requires that the city be paid any profit from the sublease.
I don't see the word profit in there. I see any amount received from the subtenant. So would that, that would be in addition to the rent that RTT would charge to Sushi, any profits from Sushi? Sushi would also have to be paid to the city?
This is where you read, we won't catch up with you.
What's that?
Where are you reading from? So we can catch up with you.
Um, section 6.2.
Of what? I don't see section 6.2. You mean the original, the original lease from, from?
Um, I took the language from the backup and I am at four waiver of right of termination and sublease payment.
So section six, that paragraph amends section 6.1 and 6.2 of the lease. Section 6.2 of the lease states that amounts received by tenant as a result of a transfer, assignment, or subletting that are in excess of the rent being paid by the tenant to the landlord are payable, not to the tenant, but to the landlord.
So, so just so I understand, that would be the rent that the subleasing, I guess we'll call it, or to be specific, Sushi by Boo would pay to RTT? It would be, that section says that we are, as the landlord, are owed not only the rent, but the profits that come from that business?
It's, the intent is that the landlord, not the tenant, receive any profits from the subletting. So for example, if the lease to the entire space that Bennys is leasing is $1,000 and they sublease a portion of it and they pay, or they're receiving $100 for the sublease, but, and they're paying $900. There's no additional money outside of the rent that the city is collecting. If they were to sublease and instead of $1,000, they receive $1,200, the city would be entitled to the $1,200, not the $1,000.
Okay, so the 100% figure is kind of correct, I think. That, that's what the intent of that language is, that.
It's if the tenant is receiving money that.
All of that should go to the landlord.
If the tenant is receiving money that is in excess of the rent that they owe the city, then the city gets the excess.
At 100% of it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and am I, there's a second question for the city attorney. Am I also correct in understanding that the Fourth Amendment, as we have it in front of us, proposes that we would decrease that 100% essentially to 0%? By waiving it?
You're waiving it. So I don't, there's not. This is a minor sublet. It's not an entire sublet of the whole space. So you're, you're, you have, the amendment agrees to waive any amount that may be due. It is likely because it's such a small portion of the facility that there would not be any additional amounts due.
That, those are all somewhat speculative. What I want to make sure I understand is that the lease, as it currently exists, says 100% of it would come to the landlord, to us, the city, and.
Of any excess.
Of, of any excess. And we would be decreasing that amount to 0% by waiving this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. City manager, is it true that our beach fund is at times, maybe even often, in danger of falling short?
That is correct.
Is it also true that if our beach fund falls short, one of our remedies, perhaps the first one we could go to, is to raise parking rates at the beach?
Yes.
Thank you, both of you, for clarifying that. That's important for us to understand these things as we go in to vote. I cannot, in good conscience, vote in favor of an item that shifts the likely increased cost to the city of an additional business in the casino building on the beachgoers with zero contribution from the tenant?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. So I had a conversation, because I've been out sick for a couple of weeks, um, with Mr. Lipton. And he is not collecting any rent from this person. He is doing a zero rent. So there's, that's a moot point when it comes to dollars being exchanged. I think what he's doing is great. Um, I think that anytime that we can help our businesses be successful, especially when they are weather dependent up at the beachfront, it's not like they're guaranteed good business all the time. Um, I had, I asked a lot of questions. Is it walk-up carryaway? Like, I really went into, like, I wanted to know this business concept. And I get it from being a business owner, because if I sublease a part of my gym to a personal trainer, that's an agreement between me and the trainer. Um, you're not giving any, you're not making any money, any profit on your landlord's business. So I agree and I would understand if he was making money on our oceanfront property and he was reaping benefits by doing a sublease, but he's not. He's trying to make his business model work. And to me, it's our job to be good stewards and, and, and understand that he's not trying to pull one over. We're not trying to pass the buck to the, to the residents or the other, other tenants. And if Mamma Mia's came to us and had the same concept, we would have to really consider that, or the T-shirt factory, any of them. So I'm glad that I had a conversation with Mr. Lipton and I got to understand why he's doing this and the whole business model, and I will be voting in favor.
Thank you. I, I also spoke with Mr. Lipton in full disclosure. I don't, I think we're torturing the concept that this is even a sublease. I think he's taking part of his store and using it for something besides to sell sushi. I mean, I really don't understand. And I think that, you know, we did hit him with a rather large increase a couple of years ago. I, last year, he had a terrible season because of the weather. It rained and rained and he did not do well. And why shouldn't we be helpful to our businesses? And why shouldn't we have, why shouldn't we welcome something that's going to bring hopefully a new crowd of people down, people that like sushi? Um, so Ms. May?
Um, I, I have no problem with this. I did it first, I did it first, because I thought the same thing that, um, Mr. McVoy is saying. But, um, I, then I, I understood, I talked to our attorney, I talked to, um, our city manager, I talked to Mr. Lipton. And really that, honestly, they're just putting in a little sushi bar. It's not like he's taking it and giving it to McDonald's to run and he's going to charge double the rent that we're giving him. So it's not, that's not the situation at all. It's a, it's like 400 square feet of that entire giant boardwalk. Or what's it called? Ocean Walk?
Ocean Walk.
Ocean Walk Restaurant, which is huge. Um, I do have one other question, because I think it was brought up and I think it's pertinent. Have we done this waiver of this section of the, um, lease to other tenants before?
With all of the tenants that have changed hands, this paragraph has always been waived.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Brown?
I'm sorry, actually, um, Vice Mayor and Commissioner May covered what I was going to say.
Oh, okay, great. I see your line on Mr. McVoy. Do you have anything else to add or, or we can get on with the vote?
Um, if the current tenant, I, I'm going by the language of the lease. And that's, and I'm very concerned that I've heard many times that our beach fund comes up short. I've also heard that we often are not, not able to do all of the services at the casino building that we would like to do. I've heard from out-of-town residents, how come you don't have any toilet paper in the bathroom? Um, so if, if I might speak, thank you. Um, it seems like there is an issue with the funding of that. It is not unreasonable to expect that if we add businesses there, we may well add expenses. And I want to know where those are coming from. I, if, if the statement is that the current tenant is not taking any rent, then I see no reason to waive section 6.2. Leave it in.
Thank you. Um, you know, we have a X amount of square footage. We're getting rent for that X amount of square footage. We're still getting the rent for the extra footage. Um, I would, um, all in favor? Oh, we have public comment. I'm sorry. Peggy Fisher? That's, I have only one public comment on this one.
Peggy Fisher, North A Street. The issue of a waiver was discussed at your pre-agenda meeting, which Commissioner McVoy did not attend and would have heard that the city has previously waived, as Commissioner May brought up, this section for both Mamma Mia's and Kilwitz. And that was said by our city attorney, Glenn Torcida. So if you have a problem with this being waived, you should have had a problem when it was done for those two entities, and it should have been discussed in this room. It was not. It was not brought up. This is called selective treatment of our tenants, and that's not appropriate.
Thank you. Well, is, is this another, you, you just give it to me. You don't have to go through the whole. Anthony Segrich?
Mission? I would urge the commission to vote in support of this amendment to the lease. It's interesting that this is now the, the second time that Mr. Lipton has kind of suffered at, at the hands of the commission in action. Um, this should have been on last meeting's, uh, agenda, and unfortunately time ran out, and that happens. But a lot of times time runs out on this commission because sometimes people are ill-prepared. So there's a lot of questions being asked about this that could have been asked a long time ago. And many on the commission did ask those important questions and ferret them out and had quick, honest discussion. So I would urge you guys, you know, to really consider that you're hurting businesses, especially on topics like this, when the can gets kicked down the road again and again. And it's not just this topic. I brought it up. We have people with leans on their homes, still sitting there, no action being taken. Mr. Lipton, in his original lease negotiation, got delayed something like eight, nine months with uncertainty with his restaurant. And now he asked for something very small, something very standard, and the can got kicked down the road again. It's quite a shame. Um, and I would just urge us to do better, especially when we're dealing with our businesses and people who are the lifeblood of our community. And in terms of trying to make money off this sublease, consider this, Mr. McVoy. I bet Mr. Lipton's two restaurants on that boardwalk account for the majority of the revenue coming to that beach, second only to the ocean itself. So trying to squeeze an extra couple hundred bucks out of them, if that's even going to happen, is kind of ridiculous. And so I really urge you guys to vote in favor of this and be more mindful in the future that when something like this comes before you, time is of the essence. This is a business. He has a business to run and people to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Mr. McVoy votes nay. Thank you. New business, agreement with L M C C Specialty Contractors doing business as MIMs Construction to provide board and secure services. Anything from the staff? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Did, uh, Director Waters leave?
Yeah, I think he's, yeah. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2-2025, supporting a collaborative process for developing and creating a countywide transportation plan. Do I have a motion?
Enthusiastic motion.
Do I have a second?
An enthusiastic second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, would you like to address us or?
I was just going to mention, um, back on December 10th, the Board of County Commissioners, um, approved, uh, moving forward with an RFP for this countywide transportation master plan. Um, this is just, uh, us in support of, you know, a lot of other cities have done the same resolution as well. We want to be part of this process. So the county is not dictating exactly what's going to happen without actually getting input from the municipalities, because we're the ones who are ultimately going to be affected by this. So.
Thank you. Yep. It's, it's nice to see some collaboration going on. Okay. Commission liaison reports and comments?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, you added that new business discussion regarding trucks.
Uh, new business discussion on, um, about, what was it? Trucks on the beach. Oh, the sand thing. Uh, Mr. McVoy?
Thank you. Uh, when I had my one-on-one meeting with, um, the city manager, I think we called up, uh, the attorney and obviously with our situation with the beach, it's a little bit in flux and there's a lot of really weird aspects to it. Who has a beach that has a 10-foot strip between our beach and the ocean that somebody else owns? That we didn't know anything about. And I mean, I didn't know anything about it. And I don't think anybody else in the commission, I don't think the staff knew about it. It came out of the woodwork. Um, but there it is. Uh, I've not seen the documentation that they own the full length, but I'll take it on faith that it in fact exists. Um, so they've got a 10-foot strip that owns, runs the length. I don't think anybody in our community thinks running trucks up and down the beach during season is a great idea.
Or any time.
Or, or any time, but during season makes it worse. Um, on the other hand, property rights is a big deal. If you own a 10-foot strip, they are, the, the owner is under no obligation to tell us when they're starting, to tell us when they're finishing, to tell us how many trucks going on. It's their strip. And in theory, they can do as they like on it. And we heard earlier that assertions that they were in communications with Lantana appear not to be the case. Um, we certainly know from past history that there have been, uh, some of these previous, uh, efforts where the material was conveyed through Lantana. We know that it has been conveyed to South Palm Beach. Um, we know that the material is going to the dunes in front of the condos in South Palm Beach. The costs of doing different alternatives, you know, who knows on, on that, uh, aspect of it, but that is not our issue. Our issue is protection of the safety of the beach. So when we were, when the attorneys and I were speaking and the city manager, given the uncertainty of what is coming, coming, and given the property right aspects, it seemed like it might not be a bad idea to in advance send a letter from our attorneys to the town of Palm Beach saying, look, we have responsibility for the safety of people on the sand, which is our territory. We have responsibility for the people in the ocean off of the sand, some distance out. That's why we have lifeguards. And now we're in this weird situation where. And now we're in this weird situation where somebody else has got a little strip in between, which everybody has to cross if they're going to go from the water to the beach, or from the beach to the water, but it's not ours. Would it not be a good idea for our attorneys to write a letter? I can't remember whether the idea came from me or from the attorneys. I have a feeling it came from the attorney, but I won't swear by that, because I don't remember. To write a letter to Town of Palm Beach that we have a concern that in our duties to protect the safety of the folks on the beach and in the water, we don't see how we can protect that safety with trucks going up and down, and at least give them a heads up that we are aware of this. Should anything happen, we talked earlier about liability. Should anything happen on that strip, would we have a liability because we, you know, didn't do anything on that 10-foot strip? I think it would be useful, and that's why I brought this up. I apologize if there's no backup, or it wasn't brought up earlier. It came out of the discussion in the one-on-one yesterday. And as I say, it came from the attorneys, and I said, well, can we just go ahead and do that? The attorneys wisely said, well, we would need direction from the overall commission to do it. And I said, okay, well, let's bring it up. Or actually, it was suggested I should bring it up, so I did. So I looked at my colleagues. Does anybody else see a safety issue? Does anybody else see?
We all see, city, of course we do.
Does anybody else suggest that it might be wise for us to put a letter together along that line? I'm not an attorney, so I don't know how to write it exactly, but something from the city of Lake Worth to the town of Palm Beach that, you know, hey, this is a concern.
One of the questions that I brought up to the city manager and to some other people too, is why are we paying our lifeguards to guard their beach? So it goes along with that. I don't know that in terms of, I'll let other folks speak. Who's next? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. First, I appreciate having, sorry, there's a lot of noise out there. I appreciate having this discussion, because time is certainly critical, and we don't get a chance to work through this, you know, effectively on our one-on-ones separately. So I think this is really helpful. I think maybe it's something to consider for other meetings. Time is ticking more on their end, to be totally honest. And, you know, I just want to be careful, because we don't want to lay out like all our legal cards, right, obviously. I'm confident that we're on the prevailing side. I think it's pretty obvious to both sides that we are. We obviously have a very strong need and duty to protect our citizens and our tenants at the beach from any kind of loss or takings, which is pretty much what we're talking about, on top of the public safety and on top of the environmental concern. And, you know, with that, I don't necessarily see a need right now to have like an official response letter, because right now, the ball is on their court. And also, you know, the city manager and staff has had some really good communications. I know I've been working closely with Jamie on discussing this issue regularly. And I think so far, that's working great. I don't think it's risen to the part where we need to step in. You know, I think their counsel is now much more aware of the situation than they were previously. And it's really unfortunate that their town staff came in and said certain things. And it's really unfortunate that they put stakes out onto the beach, because quite frankly, I think they there really isn't a whole lot of weight to their threat that they're making, just to be totally honest. And I do hope they reach out to Lantana soon. I think that is their best bet. I think that is probably their only option right now, because their condos don't want to work as well. But right now, I would say it's good to have this discussion, so that we can all be on the same page, and we can be updated. I think at the moment, though, especially from what I have seen and in my discussions with Jamie, that right now, might be a little too preemptive on that, for now. But I do think maybe, and this is kind of probably already happening to some degree, and this is mostly legal, I don't necessarily think it's maybe instruction, but, you know, internal memo to be prepared of, just in case if this does get worse and get ugly, what are the things that we need to do, and who do we contact, and things like that, just to be ready. I don't think we'll be seeing trucks driving on our beach, just because if you've ever driven a 13-yard dump truck, it wouldn't be a fun time on the beach. But I think it would, you know, be good for us to kind of be prepared for worst-case scenarios, maybe, just in case.
And I'm sure our attorney, they've been talking about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Ms. May, go ahead.
Just one question. I just have a quick question, because I agree with Mr. Diaz that it might be a little early. But didn't you say, Mr. Brown, that you sent them a letter asking for a safety plan?
Yes.
And wouldn't this be part of the safety plan? How they would ensure the safety of our residents?
What I sent over last week, there are multiple things that I requested, if this is something that they are actually looking to do. One being, obviously, public safety is first and foremost. We have a very busy pier. We have a restaurant that operates on the pier. If they're going to have trucks running underneath the pier, we obviously need some type of structural assessment on the pier itself, so we know what the current condition is. So after the process is over, we can make sure there was no damage from any type of vibration or anything from the trucks going underneath it. I do know for clearance purposes, they would have to excavate down the sand. How deep can you go? How do you even keep that dry? You use well points, so you have to dewater. There's a lot of things, but public safety being the important part, so we're not going to close our beach for a project that's not a city project. So how do people on the beach get into the water if there is a truck route in between them? And how do they get out of the water, back onto the beach, their belongings? Are they going to completely block off access for beachgoers to get into the water? Are they going to have safety officers out there making sure that no one gets run over when they're trying to get from the beach to the water? There are a lot of questions. There are a lot of concerns. We have not received any of that, because we also have, you know, the first and third Thursdays, we have our Fridays, we have bonfires on the beach. Well, that would affect our bonfires on the beach and our events up at the beach. You know, I'm going to go in my city manager's comments. We have two other events that, you know, Tiana's got brand-new events we're about to kick off, starting this week at the beach as well. So there's an event portion of this. There is also the, as I mentioned, the public safety portion. There's also, we have to push all this information out. So if this is something they're looking to do, through our PIO Rebecca, we would need to push this out to everyone. So people know, if you're going to Lake Worth Beach, there are certain things that you're not going to be able to do.
Be aware of trucks.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, there's, you know, there would be some issues up there. You can't go, especially if they're going to try and block off access. You can't go to the beach expecting into the water if they are going to say they're going to block off access to any beachgoers. And they also needed to be aware of any potential hazards up there as well. So we would have to push all this out to the public and make sure this was public knowledge well ahead of them just having trucks show up on the beach.
So I agree with all of this, and I guess this is a legal question. Do they have to care about all of the things that Mr. Brown just said? Or can they just do it?
Well, real quick, Elizabeth, I already talked about, since obviously none of us.
What if tomorrow morning, we wake up and we get phone calls, there's trucks, they're coming?
Well, keep in mind that none of us were around in 1935, when we received the letter. So none of us were aware of this 10-foot.
No, I understand that.
So that is brought forward, obviously, a lot of other questions. So to Mr. McFoy's point, more than just a letter, we already talked about, there's going to have to be some type interlocal agreement or something we're going to have to do when we get through this process with the town, because there are a lot of questions now, as far as that 10-foot. Because if that is incorporated Town of Palm Beach, as you mentioned before, Mayor, are they liable for anything that happens in that? Are they going to staff the beach? Is that now just us now operating on their property? Is there payment for us operating on their property?
Is there payment for us guarding their property?
A lot of things have come out of this, now that this is now knowledge, and we're all aware of this. So Elizabeth, I have had this conversation, so we know what's coming.
Yep.
This conversation that we have.
As well as the environmental issues. I mean, trucks drip oil, trucks, you know, break down, so.
That's all the permits that they have.
I would almost, I would wonder if we couldn't be a little more proactive in terms of Lantana and getting Lantana sort of on board, not waiting for them to contact Lantana.
I think we have.
Again, I've spoken with Brian, Reducia, the managers around there, as well as, you know, the mayor pretty well. And again, as of now, they have not been contacted. I know that from what I'm told, the communication in the past between the two. I'll just say, they're not going to be reaching out, the town of Lantana. I know that they were wanting their beach re-nourished, if they were going to allow this process to happen through them. I know that on the other side of things, they were wanting payment for that, based on the previous happenings. It sounds like that's not a.
They'll have to work that out.
So, yeah, so again, I'm just trying to keep up to speed on everything, seeing have the conversations happened, which as of now, they have not. I have not received any answers back from the questions I pushed out last week. So as of right now, we're kind of just trying to see what's going to happen, so.
So, but we are prepared if something happens? I mean, because you brought this up, I mean, are we ready to say that that's, all of these things have to happen? What kind of teeth do we have to say that?
I don't really have a very good answer for you.
Okay, I appreciate your honesty.
That, you know, the.
Uncharted waters.
We are really seriously in uncharted waters. The 10 feet is was set aside by the legislature to give Palm Beach continuity and carve out Lake Worth Beach having beachfront. So it is a very unusual situation. It does bring to light a whole lot of other questions. But that 10 feet is not in the city. So you have no jurisdiction over regulating it at all. And that's, that's kind of puts us in a tough spot with what they're wanting to do and what we can do about it. But there are definitely safety concerns that, at least in our opinion, they have to take into consideration. Whether they do or not is not my call.
Okay. Yeah, one thing I was just going to say, let me say something, and I'll call on you. Does that 10-foot go north in front of the Ritz-Carlton and the hotels and the condos? I mean, do they own that 10-foot strip all down? Is just another thought. Not done, it's not a pop quiz, I'm going to ask. It's something I thought about. Where are they getting it onto the beach?
I don't know that it's an ownership issue so much as a jurisdictional issue.
Well, it's ownership if they, I mean, if they own it, it is an ownership issue, you know? And wouldn't they, even if they do own it, when we try to do something, don't we have to have some sort of environmental considerations about what we're doing? I mean, just because we own something doesn't mean we can waste it, right? Okay, Ms. Malaga?
Thank you. Well, you've spoken already. You brought it up. Ms. Malaga? I had the same question to Mr. Brown earlier, is, I know it's 10 feet, but for how long? And where does it end?
It changes constantly.
And could they just gain access through the Oo or one of the other hotels? But my bigger concern is, and it was brought up earlier, if somebody has a heart attack on that 10 feet, we're not going to say, oh, sorry, that's not our lifeguard's problem. So this does open a bigger can of worms on, we've been guarding and protecting and taking care of that 10 feet in perpetuity. Where's our payment for that?
Exactly.
You know, the pier, they have 10 feet of the pier supposedly where the pylons are. Like, this does open a much bigger can of worms than just the trucks coming down the beach, which obviously, we don't want either. So my bigger concern is making sure that this doesn't get put on a shelf somewhere, and we don't make sure that we get the interlocal agreements, like Jamie said, safety plans. We need to make sure that, you know, do we go to the legislature and say, this was written in 1935, and it's caused a big problem? Maybe this is something that needs to be redacted. Maybe this is something that needs to be, you know, looked at and said, this is a real problem. You know, now we have 10 feet of beach that we're patrolling, that technically doesn't even belong to us, but, you know, we're taking the liability. So maybe this is something where we look to the state and get our legislators and our congresspeople involved and say, how can you help us in Palm Beach solve this issue? Because now it's a bigger issue, not because of something, again, it's not our fault, but it's our problem.
Anecdotally, I'd always heard that the city had given away the beach to Palm Beach. And that was, for years and years, I've heard that. And now, when they brought this up, the 35-foot strip, in order for some, 10, in order for something, for Palm Beach to be on this side of Lake Worth, and Palm Beach to be on this side of Lake Worth, I think that 35 thing was to make it a contiguous piece. So how can you get rid of, thank you, how can you get rid of that now? I mean, that's one of the problems. They have to be contiguous. So, Mr. McFoy, you brought it up, you're going to end it. What's your last comment?
What I'm hearing from the attorney is, yes, this is a highly unusual situation. I have no idea whether it occurs anywhere else on the shoreline of Florida. I'm guessing not, but who knows? But it sounds like what I'm hearing, at least at first blush, they own that 10-foot strip. It doesn't move. It's defined, you can look all this stuff up. It's defined by the mean high water, which has a very specific elevation. You can look that up too. We know what it is at our pier. You can take that elevation and find where it is XY, and then draw the line, and then you go 10 feet west of that. So it's mappable, and one of the things that I've asked for is, well, let's get at least a sketch from Town of Palm Beach for where it is relative to the pier. If there's a pylon in the middle of it, that would be kind of a drag. Certainly, it is very likely that you would have to excavate sand if the pylon isn't in the middle, and that has a whole string of concerns. But given that the property right aspect to that 10-foot strip, I think it's not an unreasonable assumption that if they want to do it, they can go ahead and do it. And that's why I suggested it might be a good idea for us to at least put a letter in that, okay, you own the strip. You can do what you want on the strip, but we have issue east-west with safety. And strip or no strip, we still have that safety issue, so, you know, we object. We don't feel that we can guarantee the safety of our beach users, Lake Worth residents or otherwise, if you're running trucks up and down. And to me, it seems, I don't think it's premature. It seems to me wise to get something in the record early on that we, yes, we do have a concern. That's my thinking on it. I don't, you know, I'm not a legal person, so I don't know, but.
I'm not against the idea of a letter. I just think maybe the thing to look at it is, maybe a good goal this week is for staff to try and get a response, something from them in return to Jamie's most recent requests. And go from there. I mean, if they don't respond, if they respond in an even worse way, then 100%, we should be ready to do that. But I think if we try this week, yeah, if we try this week to get a response, because, I mean, quite frankly, like, you know, it's almost a shame to say this publicly, but I feel like, from the practical standpoint, the threat that was said is just, it's laughable. It's almost like a joke, like, who do they think we are? I mean, how do you dewater the ocean? What size pump are you going to use? So I know, you know, things are possible, for sure, engineering, you can accomplish anything, but the price tag, you know, obviously, is going to be significant. And right now, their path of least resistance is to work with Lantana and build their beach so that they can drive trucks across that way, because that's that's what Lantana wants.
But you know what's interesting? Sylvester Stallone was trying to do something in front of his property, and the town of Palm Beach pushed against it until he redacted his permit.
Familiar with that.
They are trying to do.
Yeah.
Okay, we have public comment. Peggy Fisher? Yeah. Thank you.
Peggy Fisher, North A Street. I think all the comments are good. What I want to speak about is something that was very disturbing to me about this issue, and that was a social media post on Facebook by a member of the diocese from four days ago. And one section of that post said, actions I have taken. I have taken. On December 16th, I requested a legal opinion from our attorney. Anticipating pressure requested legal opinion, requested city staff to Requested city staff to determine. Ask our city staff to request from town of Palm Beach to scale drunk. If I'm reading the charter right, I doesn't exist for any of you up there to ask anybody other than this person right here and to work as a consensus. I is not used. And I'm sorry, Commissioner McVoy, but you've done it time and time again. And then to put it on Facebook so that it looks like nobody else is doing anything is not appropriate. It's against our charter. And we now are having this discussion because legal came back and said, we do what the consensus is, not what I want. So that's my comment. It's on Facebook. It's still on Facebook for anybody in this city, town of Palm Beach, anywhere else to read. That is inappropriate. And I is not part of our charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Townsend.
Me again. Todd Townsend, 502 South J Street. I'd like to thank the doctor for his work. Um, but let's, we, we gotta take a longer view of what this thing is going to be. The, the trucks are not going to be driving over the sand. They're going to be driving over this road that's gonna, this big temporary road that's gonna have to be put down all the way along the beach. And what that's, what is that gonna be? Big rocks compressed into the sand and then little rocks on top of that and press it and pack it. So you can drive these trucks up and down that. This is a forever disaster. Like the PIFAs is forever. The beach will be destroyed and that'll be it. It'll just be, and then even when they reef, when they fix it, it'll still be all, you won't have, you know, sand, you'll have sand and rocks and it'll just be really uncool.
Thank you. Lou, Lou Crampton? I figured it was. I didn't recognize you. So we know everybody in this room.
I think I know most of you. Good evening. Yeah. My name is Lou Crampton and I am a, an elected town counselor of the town of Palm Beach. Uh, and I am happy to be here tonight. I had a whole speech, a whole set of things, but it's probably too soon for me to get into that. So let me just try to deal with a couple of the considerations that have been raised. One of them is that if you've asked for a safety report from us, I'm quite sure that the town of Palm Beach will provide it in full, in full measure. And answer all the questions you've asked. We are not being arrogant about this. We are not. Um, we had a deal. That deal fell apart. We're trying to, you know, reconstruct the situation that will work well for both of us. I mean, we're trying to work with you on a water plant. Uh, this kind of back and forth uh, is not going to help me as an individual vote for that water plant when that comes up. I'm just running that out. My thought with respect to the logistics of the situation, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe you can clarify this for me, Mr. Brown, isn't the access point going to be on the south end of the property? Or is it on the, is it on the north end?
You need to, you need to get caught, you, why don't you have a meeting with Mr. Brown to get kind of caught up? Because what, that was the original plan. We found out that was illegal.
The original plan was on the south end.
But we found out because of this referendum, it was illegal to do that, to allow anything like that to happen. So we had to back out because it was illegal. None of us knew that. I mean, Mr. McVoy did, I guess, but yeah, it was a referendum in 2009. So it's, we, it, it was an illegal agreement that we entered. Then we came, we were told by your folks that you actually own 10 feet of our beach and they're gonna drive their trucks on it no matter what, get over it.
Yeah, well, of course.
Which was a bit of an arrogant attitude, I will say.
We, we drive truck. Well, we, we're reacting to what we felt was a misleading situation. We don't have to get into that. I don't want to get into pointing. We, I just want to say, speaking, and I'm only speaking for myself.
Sure.
I'm not speaking for my colleagues on the council. I'm not speaking for Mayor Moore. And I'm not speaking for our town manager, our legal staff.
Sure.
But I, I do want, and I can tell you that I know my colleagues want to get this situation settled amicably and workably. If Lantana will step up and do this, great. But we those people are my constituents. I'm, I live in the south end, 2335 South Ocean Boulevard. And it's a dune restoration project. It's not a, it's not a beach renewal project. We're working on the dunes, which protect upland property. So we feel we have some responsibilities to our constituents that we want to follow through. We, this money is federal money and it's state money, and it's been authorized by the beach management agreement, which I'm sure you all know about. So I just want to say that our staff, our professional staff is willing to work with your professional staff to come to an agreement on this thing. If we can just relax a little bit and, um, not be arrogant, if you will, and not be, uh, in any way dilatory. We need to move forward on this because we've got turtle, turtle nesting season, which will cut off our ability to do any work on this project. So again, thank you for allowing me to.
I appreciate you coming up. We appreciate you coming up.
This is, I'm not here to jump up and down.
No, no, you're, you're. You're not jumping up and down. I, I, I'm gonna say something boldly. I wish your staff would call Lantana.
Say, say again?
I wish your staff would, I hope I'm not out of line, but I really wish your staff would call Lantana because you had an interlocal with them. They want the sand. They're willing to give you access. South Palm had an interlocal with Lantana. It was all set up. And then I don't know what happened. 2022 is two years ago. It expired. Right. But I, when I, in my conversations with the mayor of Lantana, she was like, why, why, why are they talking to you? We, we want it and they can have access. So.
Well, I will certainly take your message back.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Really, that, that would solve all the problems.
Yeah, sure. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Say a couple of words.
Absolutely. Thank you. And, and welcome to Lake Worth Beach. Okay, next up. With my, with my cataract sight, Anthony Zeitlin, followed by Carla Bloxson.
Anthony Zeitlin, 117 18th Avenue South. Um, you know, Commissioner Diaz, I think that you underestimate the importance of this, um, saying the ball is in their court. This is a David and Goliath situation. Do you know who the constituents of Palm Beach are? They include the, uh, the to be inaugurated present. You think that they're just gonna let this slide and be like, well, maybe we'll just, you know, play amicably. No offense, but they are gonna destroy us if you just let this be a passive thing. We have to be very aggressive. If we just let Goliath come up to us and just do what he wants, we're gonna have real problems. Um, as far as driving these large trucks, yes, of course, you're not gonna drive them and get stuck in the sand. They're gonna probably either put grading down or they'll put these, those giant, uh, steel plates that they use in New York City. It's gonna be an ecological disaster. Um, as far as digging under the pier, I mean, is that a joke? Like how they're gonna dig under the pier? You know what's gonna happen, given Lake Worth's, you know, luck? They're gonna hit something important. They're gonna knock out power. They're gonna knock that out. They're gonna destroy the pier. That'll be down, just like it was after the hurricanes in 2004, for like five years it took to rebuild the pier. You know, and, and the, to me, the most, I mean, what about the economical impact? $80,000, I hear that number thrown around. I want $80 million. How much money is that pier generating? Is the beach generating? Is Bennys on the Beach generating for Lake Worth as a community? Those are, those are much larger numbers than $80,000. I don't understand why, like, I don't even know what that is for. That sounds like a, like a change thing for Palm Beach. Um, if this is federal money, why aren't we going to the federal government directly and asking, why aren't they giving us as, our cut as well? I think we should be very aggressive about this. I don't think that we should be like, we'll just wait for them to respond. We'll send them a nice letter. How do letters, uh, how do letters work for the UN? It doesn't seem like it really, it's really effective. We need action. Um, and that's, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Carla Bloxson?
Carla Bloxson, 1802 Pierce Drive. One of the things that I don't think that we've considered is there is a court of law, but there's also the court of public opinion. We have to convince people that this is not a good plan. This is not something that we want to do. We don't want those trucks on our beach. We will stand in front of the trucks and someone is going to get hurt. This is not an alternative for us. If the city of Lantana is willing to do this, they had an interlocal agreement. We need to be shouting from the rooftops that the Lantana had said yes, they had an agreement two years ago. And now Palm Beach has decided to run us over because they can. And that is how it really is. It is not a question of whether or not we can get along, we can be amicable and all of that. It is that we are, they are Goliath, we are David. And if I'm going to be David, I want to be yelling David. I don't want to be a David that is going to be sitting there saying, we're gonna just wait and see. No, I want the world to know they had an agreement with Lantana. And they decided instead of honoring that agreement, they would rather drive those trucks over our beach, over some kid that is gonna not realize that he can't get to the beach in enough time, he can't get to the water before the truck runs over him. It is very much like people trying to outrun Brightline. People die in front of Brightline all the time because they think their car is faster. I don't know why. If so many people have been dead, they should realize that's not a good plan. But that kid was five, he doesn't have a plan. And if people pay for parking to come on our beach and then they get down there and they realize they can't get in our beach, are we gonna refund their parking money? What is this gonna say for our reputation? We are the beach do not ever go to because they can't let us be on their beach. We have to realize how this is going to affect us, our reputation, our community and our livelihood. We cannot allow this. And if one way to do it is to convince the world that this is not a good idea, we need to stand up and say it's not a good idea for everybody to hear it. If we have to buy an ad in the Palm Beach Post to let people know that this is the plan, this is where we stand, and they had another option and they chose not to take it. That should be our stance.
Thank you. I see Ms. Malaga's light on.
Thank you. Um, that was gonna be my question, you know? What is gonna be the economic impact to our city, to our parking, to our businesses who pay, pay leasing? And to, to their employees? There are how many employees that Bennys and Mamma Mias and the T-shirt factory that they employ? That is gonna affect all of those people. And, and, and this is more for you, Mr. Town Counselor from, from Palm Beach. We, this is not just about five elected sitting up here. And how many vote people, somebody told me there was less than 200 votes on that referendum. It's not about the 200 votes on the referendum and these five people. This is about a bigger economic impact. And we've all talked about safety and we know that that's number one. But we're in peak season.
Right.
And you cannot impact the people who rely on the money that they make during our season. That is, it's not equitable. It's not fair. You said that you live in a condo on South Palm Beach. Why aren't you pleading to your board, your condo board to get, gain access to your condo? There's gotta be a different way. If there's condos are benefiting from the dune restoration, which is gonna ultimately help your insurance, I'm assuming? That's the bigger question. Why aren't these condos saying, you know what? This is gonna protect us. We need to, to take a step back and say, you know, we need to be the team player. They're the ones who are getting the benefit. Nobody in our city is getting any benefit. Lantana may, if they, if they work a deal, but really the benefit is to the condo owners who are already facing exuberant insurance costs, high taxes, and a lot of them are getting assessed right now. I would think that it should be, to me, if I lived in a condo, it would make sense that I would plead to my board, figure out a way to make this work so that sand comes in front of my building, in front of my investment. Because if there, there's a big economic impact, I don't care about you driving trucks up and down. Y'all gonna write a big check to make sure that our residents and our tenants and their employees are taken care of. And how much parking revenue are we gonna lose? That's huge. This is our season. Our parking revenue is gonna be highly affected. As soon as people see construction, they're gonna be like, whoop, I'm out of here. I'm going to the next, I'm going to the next beach. And my, that's not fair.
My understanding was the South Beach, the, the South Palm Beach and the, and the Palm Beach didn't want it because of this, the fear of the vibrations, the effect of the vibrations on the condo buildings. That's one thing. Well, I'm concerned about the effect of those vibrations on my pier. You know, we can avoid all this. We can avoid all. So Mr. McVoy, let's, we're gonna wrap this up. It's eight o'clock now.
And as you do go, if you do take the vice mayor's suggestion of talking to the condo associations, remember that trucks and vibrations isn't the only option. You can convey that in various ways. They're conveying it in a pipe already. It's wet, so it's probably not an option, but you can do conveyor belts. There are things you can do. Will there be a cost with it? Probably. Um, but add to the vice mayor's point. And I know that you said you didn't want to be arrogant and I appreciate it. And I think all of us recognize that you do, you are not, and you don't want to be. But do recognize that the benefit is to South Palm Beach. And what we hear is, well, yeah, but they didn't want the stuff going between them. Why don't we go through Lake Worth that doesn't get any benefit out of it? Yeah, it, it doesn't leave us with a very good feeling. And I, I think Ms. Bloxson is probably right that you may find people in front of the trucks at some point. And that's a problem that you really don't want to have. Oh, I saw some volunteers.
We're hearing a lot of that. Um, Mr. Segwitch, public comment is closed. We were closed with public comment. Mr. Brown?
You guys mentioned I'll reach out to, uh, town staff again and see if we can get any kind of, uh, updates since I haven't heard anything since my, my, um, email last week. And I, I will say that, uh, our aquatics manager, Doug Yokum, um, who's been here longer than I've been here. I've been here 14 years this year. Um, he did, January 1st last week, said the beach was bigger than he's ever seen it. And I was up there on Thursday, on the second. There were no parking spaces on the top of the dune or the bottom of the dune. It was slammed. So we have a, it's seized, as you mentioned, Vice Mayor. It's seized. We're in the middle of season and it is extremely crowded up there. So I can't state enough how important the public safety portion of this is.
And the revenue portion of it.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, yes. Thank you. Sure.
Is that correctable in any way in terms of amendment?
Well, there would have to be a new referendum and I doubt at this point.
What you're saying is that there have to be a rec, a referendum.
A new referendum.
There not gonna be a legal.
We can't know.
Interpretation of it. And that, that is your, that's a town's position.
Correct.
And that's why we've not, we've gone from the south end of the property, which would not have had trucks
Right.
running on your beach.
Exactly.
Which was our original agreement.
Right.
Uh, to now it has to come all the way across your property, including.
North, south.
Including the pier.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it.
And I, and your position is that, that, that's not correctable except by another referendum?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr., uh, can I, sir, sir?
It's not a position.
Have said contact information.
We can't go again.
I know.
And, and.
Have you seen the, um, interlocal agreement between?
I haven't, no.
Okay, I can send that to you.
So I'm the, I'm the deputy chief of the town.
All right. We're talking to the right guy.
Good. Thank you for coming, by the way.
We just wanna see this stall.
No, we.
And you need to do it in a hurry, I think, because of the time.
As soon as we're done here, Mr. Brown's gonna make it. Oh, you just didn't make the statement.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to let the council know, because he was, he was asking. So just really quickly, if I can just clarify. So back on November 3rd of 2009.
Thank you very much, folks.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure, so, so I clarified everything. Back on November 30, 2009, there was a referendum and our city voted. And it was very clear because it was basically this exact same project. So the, the actual language in that referendum was very clear that we could not allow access through our city of Lake Worth Beach property um, to any entity, um, for beach re-nourishment on our beach or to re-nourish any adjacent beaches. So that's why when we initially, um, had agreed to allow that access on our south entryway.
We forgot about the referendum.
Well, no one was here then.
It never, it was never codified. The referendum was held, but the city clerk didn't put it in our charter like she should have. So she's gone. She's gone.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, so we notified two days after that vote actually took place. Obviously, this is a referendum. It was voted on by our, our public. We can't, it, it.
I mean, you're not, you're not going back to your public.
Right, yeah.
You know, abusing public parks.
Yeah.
So I understand.
So unfortunately I did notify, um, your staff down that unfortunately, we are now aware of this referendum.
That's a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
Created this problem.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for coming and trying to get it straightened out.
Work it out. We really do.
Yeah. Well, I, I would have a chat with Lantana. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. And thank you for coming. We very much appreciate it. Um, okay, now we are at Commission Liaison Reports and Comments. And let's start with District One.
Thank you. It's good to be back in the saddle, although I'm a little under the weather. Um, I want to say that I heard nothing but great things about the holiday parade. And I want to say thank you to staff and kudos. I heard, even though I wasn't here, a lot of people called and told me that it was successful. And where were you was the question that I got from a lot of people. Um, so kudos to staff. Um, the only thing I want to remind everyone is this Thursday at 1:00 PM, we have a groundbreaking for a new Habitat House at 223 Southeast Street. So if you can come out, it's the groundbreaking. It's not the house dedication. It is actual groundbreaking. And then we have another one. We have a ribbon. We have a ribbon cutting for the Educational Foundation on the 16th at 10:00 AM. And that's the Educational Foundation Apple Store and that is on Barton, across from Barton Elementary. Please come out and welcome everybody with open arms to the City of Lake Worth Beach. And otherwise, it's good to be back and Happy New Year to everybody and let's have a healthy, happy and prosperous, kind, nice 2025. And the only reason I'm wearing this hat, for clarity, is because I bet Commissioner May on the Lions Bills game and I lost. So, even though we are the North Champions, I'm wearing this in support of the fact that I lost a bet and I owned up to it.
And she's a woman enough to own up to it. Good for her. Thank you, Division Two, District Two.
I'd like to wish all our residents a happy, prosperous, healthy and safe New Year. I understand that there was a discussion, I was on vacation in a way and with family things, so I did not, was not able to participate in the pre-agenda meeting, but I understand that there was a proposal to change our rules that we would no longer read public comment sent to the website at meetings. Is my understanding correct on that?
Yes.
Did we, now, I don't think we vote at pre-agenda meetings. So, does, if, that sounds like a rule change, so I would assume we need to bring that back for a vote.
We can.
Okay. I would certainly want to be very clear that many people in our community have families, have young kids, work, some of them work two jobs. They are not all able to come in person to these meetings. If you look around the room, you will see that many of the people who are regulars here are of a certain age and probably have gone to the end of their work career.
It's me.
And no, not age discrimination, that if you're retired, it's not a big issue to come to a meeting in the evening. If you're working or if you have a young family or even middle family, that's not so easy. So, I have a great deal of discomfort with the idea that we would no longer read public comment that is put in by website. I think it does not help transparency, it does not help our residents to feel heard and I think that's one of our primary responsibilities as elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. District Three?
Oh, that's me.
Yeah, that would.
Sorry, I was back on the comment thing, but there's no reason to have a discussion on that because I did, I did talk to the clerk after it and it does need to be, we need to change our rules of, rules of, what is it called? No.
Procedure.
Thank you, rules of procedure. So, that is.
On the January 21st agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, it says Commissioner Liaison Reports. I am the liaison to the NA PC, so I'm gonna bring the information from the NA PC. On January 23rd, which is a Thursday, there'll be a candidate's forum. It will be at, I think, 6:00, 6:30, somewhere in there, at the Lake Worth Playhouse. It's gonna be a debate-style forum for candidates that are running for District Two and District Four. So far, everybody except one candidate has RSVP'd that they will be attending. On February 21st, which is the night before Street Painting Festival, the Great Taste of Lake Worth Beach will occur again this year. Tickets are on sale right now on Ventbright and tickets are going to be printed and be on sale at probably Tacky Tourist and Paws on the Avenue. ASAP. Our printer just retired and closed his door, so we're trying to figure out where we're gonna print these tickets. So, that's what's going on with Great Taste. And I, I, I wanna ask for, for a consensus. I've been thinking about the liens against the people's houses and I just, I'm not, I'm not a real estate person, so I don't know this. If you have a lien against your house, can you sell your house? Okay, so, go ahead, without paying it off.
Well, if, if one of these, my, my feeling is if one of these, if someone tried to sell their house and one of our liens that we've pretty much said we're not gonna enforce, we would do a release of lien for that.
Okay, so I think that I'd like to ask for consensus for staff to come back with a plan to release these people from these liens. We have said publicly that we are not enforcing this law, that I agree with Mr. Sedgley, that this is, it's not fair. And it's something that prevents them from selling their house without having to do what the mayor just said, so I, I need, but I can't do it alone because it's a we. Do you guys have any desire to back me up and have staff come back with that sort of plan?
Not, not necessarily, not offhand. I mean, I still think that there is something in the ordinance that talks about. I'm not thoroughly convinced that they shouldn't be there, but in the office, in the, in the thought of starting over and letting these people go on, because I think we have to resolve this some, we didn't successfully do it last night.
No, we didn't successfully do it. I'm not saying that we're, but in the meantime, if I'm sitting there, every time I look at my property, I know that I owe this money. I mean, I've had people call me crying because they're so worried about it. And I'm trying to tell, and these are constituents, where I'm trying to tell them, we're gonna take care of it, we're gonna take care of it. But they're crying. I, you know, they, they, this is a single mom, she wants to raise her kid, she's terrified that she owes all this money. And if she went to go get a loan, that would be on, that would be on there. You know, this is preventing people from, from living their life in a safe way. I just, that's, it's not right. So, I know you don't agree, but I'm putting it out there.
I don't necessarily disagree with releasing liens because there has been so much question about it, okay? I think we really need to look and we, you know.
That's what I'm asking for, to give direction to staff to look at this, what would be the process, what would be the consequences? Can we look at the situation with the liens on these people on, with AstroTurf? That's all I'm asking for. I'm not saying release them all from liens, but do something.
Yes or no?
Very, very ironic. That earlier in the meeting, we said, well, we are a city of rules.
We don't have a rule on this.
We do have a rule.
No, we don't.
Code is known as an exclusionary code.
Mr. McQuaid, please print your thing on.
Sorry. So, our code is known as an exclusionary code, as most codes are. And it was clear that we do not allow it, so if somebody does something illegal, I think your suggestion, and on a much major, more major scale than selling a couple tamales out of a cooler somewhere or other, you're saying that it's okay to be illegal with that and in fact, we'll go out of our way to remove liens and things like that, which is our normal process. But you got a problem with $5 tamales.
That's not what I'm saying.
That sounds to me like a very uneven application of justice.
Thank you. Certainly there's.
Not what I'm saying. I'm gonna respond to that. That is not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying we have publicly said that we have not been able to make a decision on this. We have said we are not enforcing this. We have publicly stated that. It's written. We also, I'm sorry, but I don't agree with you that the code doesn't say that you can't have AstroTurf. William said you can have it where the, there can be impervious surface. So, there's not a ban on AstroTurf, so I don't agree with that. All I'm asking is for the attorney to go and look and see, how can we alleviate the pain these people are in? That's it.
Uh, Mr. Fia, you don't have anything to say? Okay. And Ms. Malaga left.
You know, how you responded, I, I, yes, it needs to be looked at for sure. I think we've talked repeatedly, maybe even before you've been up here, that we wanna move the city's code enforcement to more compliance-driven, less punitive as a whole. You know, those enforcement actions were put on hold because of the question at hand and because the question has been out there for long enough. I do think, you know, correctly, we should look at how to move these forward, not, the words you used initially, I think were a poor choice. You said like to just release all the liens and I don't, you're right. We, yeah, so I think in that regard, yeah, we do need to look at it and, and have a plan because, you know, I haven't seen every single lien and what it's, you know, why exactly and how it got to that far. I do tend to agree. We don't wanna lien people for, you know, certain things are gonna be more egregious than others for sure, right? Your slum lords, people shacking up RVs in their backyard, things like that, like that's what I, I feel liens are intended for, things like this, which are, you know, I still see them as an issue for sure, but I think there's pathways to resolving that issue without having such a profound negative effect of a lien. It is pretty drastic and so, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. May. Do we have consensus to have the staff and the attorney take a look at what liens are existing and just, just to be a little proactive?
Just so you know, I spoke with your staff about this today. They were already looking at it. Because there are, each situation is different and there are some that may need to remain in place and some that may be able to be released, but they'll, they'll be analyzed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I just don't wanna let it rest.
Anything else?
Not that I wanna get into right now, but thank you. But, oh, I do wanna thank Vice Mayor Malaga. That's a good sport to be sitting there in that hat. Doesn't it look good on her?
No, looks okay to me.
She looks great. Okay, I'm done.
Mr. Daz, you're up.
Constantly reminded I'm the only Floridian and we just have the dolphins, so I'll just keep quiet, but. Oh, there's my chip. And it's just, I'm out, no. Oh, gosh, that was a distractor. What is there to say? We've, you know, this is the season of events. We've had some like really tremendous events. Cindy in the library put on Fantastic Fourth, which is kinda like a mini comic book convention for kids. That was really fun. You know, the, the bonfire is just, the tenants at the beach are raving about just the absolute improvement. It's very visible and, you know, changes are made and how we do our events and things like that and often there, there's a little bit of skepticism. I would call it healthy skepticism, I'm sure. But the proof is in the pudding and that last bonfire was, I mean, Tiana, what you did with the weather, like, you just really nailed it. So, all the events, you're right. So, our events are a big deal and so many ways and they're just, they're definitely improving under, under her leadership and it's really appreciated. So, it's just gonna get better. And I think that's, that's all I had.
And along those same lines with the, talking about the Leisure Services Department and the PIO, for the first time, I was, I was reading, I'm a daily subscriber to the Palm Beach Post and there was Ms. May in notable people being lauded for what she had done with the I E M O. And that never had happened before and so, thank you very much. We need to get the recognition. We, you know, it's very funny because people come up and, you know, we all have a lot of negative comments about the city and you're never gonna make everybody happy. We work very hard and our staff works very hard. There's always room for improvement. I don't think people understand the level and the amount of emails and texts and things that we get from our constituents every day about this or that or this and it's hard to keep up. That's just hard to keep up. I am very impressed also with the leisure, the whole, the whole season was great. The bike giveaway was wonderful, it was a big success. The, the Christmas parade was a big success. We had, it's just been great. The, and I wanna say, I wanna thank the NA PC. I wasn't able to make it this year, but the New Year's Eve celebration at the Beach Club, which is purely private, purely private, purely, and that's what I love is that it is resident-driven, that it's, you know, something that came up by the residents, they wanted to do it and they're doing it and they don't ask the city for really any help, so it's a huge event and it's wonderful to see it happen. Yeah, amazing. So.
Can I just tell her, we stayed and cleaned up every single little piece of glitter from that entire thing with a shop back, so hopefully the next morning, the golfers didn't see any glitter, but next year, there are no poppers.
No poppers. Ban on poppers. So, you know, kudos and Happy New Year to everybody. The legislature is about to open. Sarah and I are on legislative committees and tomorrow, tomorrow morning is the legislative update. Are you gonna go to that? Yep, at the Kaiser University, I'll be there as well. And then we'll start schlepping up to Tallahassee once or twice to beg for money and that sort of thing. Ms. Ten, you know, Deborah, we're watching you. So, no pressure, none at all. So, other than that, I, it's, it just feels like it was a long holiday season and we're just like, what day is it? It's like, I just, I don't know what day it is, but today it's Tuesday. We're here, we're back and thank you very much for everybody coming. Thank you for our staff that does the stuff and thank you for our citizens who are just really pretty terrific. Thank you so much and have a great New Year, everybody. So. Jamie?
Good evening. I'll try and keep this somewhat short. Especially since I'm distracted and someone is wearing a horrendous Kansas City Chiefs jacket out there. Yeah, Mr. Richters. So, real quick update on the Momota Museum. So, staff along with our legal and the CRA and their legal and their legal. And we're dealing with all of these agreements that were listed in the overall development agreement. We have a relocation agreement we're currently working on, the long-term arts alley agreement. February, we bringing back the parking agreement of the garage, so we're, we're working, all that's moving forward. A lot of, a lot of back and forth right now, trying to get all these agreements ironed out. Also, I spoke with Amy Gill at Gulfstream, obviously that's in construction currently. They're doing a little over a million in additional structural work that was not planned on.
Of course.
Who, who knew? Who would have known? Who would have known? So shocking. All their windows, doors are ordered, they're pouring the pool on Tuesday, all that's moving along, so that, that project is rolling forward. Already touched on, obviously, Ms. Fisher brought up the flags, we probably said it all earlier. We're rolling through the tape right now to see what's going on with that, but we'll have flags put back up again tomorrow. In the meantime, until we find out what happened to the others. Next Thursday on October 16th.
October?
I'm sorry.
We're all in trouble tonight. What day? I just said, what day?
Next Thursday. January.
January.
January. I put 10 down here instead of one. Back of Irish Brigade, 6:30 to 8:30, we're doing the next Business Advisory Board meeting.
What day is that?
Uh, next Thursday.
Which is the, oh, I'm wrong.
The 16th, from 6:30 to 8:30. Business Advisory Board. The last one we had was back in October, but we'll, yeah, we're having the next Business Advisory Board meeting. I've not gotten the latest agenda from our chair, Aaron Allen, but I'm hoping to see that tomorrow. We'll have another one of those. We do have two new events coming to the beach. First one this Thursday on the 9th, Sip and Taste of Jazz. And then on Thursday, February 3rd.
I'm sorry, why would we have that on a day that we have to have a special meeting? I wanna sip and drink and go to jazz. What the, bad planning.
Wait, what is that? The 9th?
Well, one is on the 9th, one is on, another one in February 13th, so on Thursdays. And it's a sip and taste of jazz. We also have on Friday, this Friday, the 10th from 6 to 8, we have karaoke on the beach. So, these are new events that Leisure Services is bringing forward. We also had.
Street be closed the same way, Tiana?
Come on up.
Come on up.
Which one? It's new, it's very new. It's just coming out, we're getting it posted. It should be coming out tomorrow. Sorry, Tiana McKay, Director of Leader Services. Thank you all for the notes about our department. I will definitely share all the sentiments, our special events team and everyone's been working really hard, so thank you for that. The sip of jazz is very new and we are going, we're testing it out, but we're looking at how we can also bring it into when we do have turtle season, so perhaps we're doing it like an early afternoon sip of jazz so that we're not affecting the turtles. So, this is new and if it is a success, we will explore closing the streets, but we don't wanna just close the streets. We don't have to just yet, but if it grows, we definitely would do that.
Is it on the beach or is it up toward?
So, the music is gonna be set up next to the big chair, so you could hear it if you are on the patio, you could also hear it if you're on the beach. And the karaoke, the stage is gonna be facing the beach, so you're actually gonna be on stage and everyone will be watching you down on the beach.
And what time is this?
So, they're both from 6 to 8, so the sip of jazz is from 6 to 8 on Thursday and then the karaoke is.
I won't be here on Thursday. I have another, I have something else to do.
And this week, this Thursday, the jazz is the same jazz quartet, the Neil Bacher Quartet that's been playing at the library, so we know that they've been packing the library with the jazz, so there is a desire for jazz, so we thought special events is like, you know what, let's bring it to the beach. special events is like, you know what? Let's bring it to the beach. So we're testing it out at the beach to see if it goes at the beach. And our karaoke events have been successful in the Cultural Plaza. So we are looking to, uh, expand our event offering at the beach. So this is some new things we're doing in addition to all the great events we already have. So bravo. Thank you.
Don't, don't be offended that we can't go.
That's okay. We're not going to stop, so we'll keep going. There's lots of events. Okay.
Thank you. Um, and since, uh, Tiana was up here, uh, I did want to mention that, uh, her and I did have a meeting today over at PBSO. Um, to discuss, uh, street painting, obviously with the, uh, horrendous events, um, over the holidays in New Orleans. Um, modifying, we, we are already doing, you know, our large, uh, solid waste vehicles, park nodes across, like the cross streets and all this stuff. So we're already doing stuff like that, but also now taking it a step further and kind of modifying some of the stuff on the sidewalks and just being proactive, um, so we're not waiting until too close to, um, the event. So we had a very, uh, very packed meeting today at PBSO, kind of going through all of the things. It's, uh, as you guys know, very well-attended, very crowded event. Um, so, you know, unfortunately, these things, uh, force you to, um, kind of go back and look at your operational plan and, and what you can do as far as a safety measure standpoint to to kind of address all this. So.
Are you going to have people on the roofs? Why is he looking at it like a cop on the roof looking down at everything?
Um, not to go too into detail.
Yeah.
We'll, uh, we're going to be well-covered this year. So.
I will say, when I was listening to the coverage of that, they, they brought up the fact that New Orleans did not use sanitation trucks to help block. And I was like, we do, we do. Like.
And we're going to use the clean one on Lake, on Dixie Highway.
Yeah, that was unfortunate to watch some of that because, you know, as you probably watched a lot of that with the bollards and a lot of things that could have prevented some of the, the things happening. So.
Well, they said they had the bollards, but they had to take them down because of so many Mardi Gras bees, they got jammed. They wouldn't, they would be jammed open or closed. I was like.
I will.
Okay. I think that's a good idea.
Um, that's all I have.
Okay, I had one thing that you reminded me on parking, you know, we're talking about parking a lot. Um, there was a complaint the other day on Facebook about someone who had gotten a parking ticket and he, you know, said he moved his car, but, but what it came down to, and like, that's, that's a different issue, but what it came down to, he said that he, actually, he was parked on Lake Avenue for about seven hours, but he moved it a couple of times. He's an employee in a bar on Lake Avenue. So I, I sort of went to like, that's the bigger problem. Now, I'm wondering if we can't just take a look at the possibility of working with our downtown businesses to have a deal with the Bohemian Parking to maybe a reduced rate for employees, because then if they're scared, they can circuit back to, you know, however they can work that out. Because I, I've seen it myself. Our Lake Avenue employees are, are parking on Lake Avenue. I've been, and I just think that yeah, I, yeah, I've, right. So I, I think, and we have all this empty parking spaces, which is just a couple of blocks away. So I'd like to just take a look at maybe working on something with the employees downtown.
And as we mentioned before, it's part of that larger discussion.
Right, right.
The Hatch Building.
But if it's happening, it's.
I know.
Yeah.
Even the Hatch Building, you know, the Hatch Parking Lot they could park in.
Okay. All right. So Madam Attorney, got anything for us? I have nothing. Thank you. Happy New Year. Happy New Year. Do I have a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That's long. All in favor, we want to say all in favor. I.
I.
Meeting is adjourned.